Good evening. It's five thirty P M on Wednesday, May first, two thousand twenty-four, in this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is not called to order in the council chambers at City Hall, one, one, two, three, West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Grimm presiding, also President or Council President Deb Rule, Councilor Joe Hero is joining us remotely. Councilman Justin Dick, Councilman Kyle Schreiber, and Councilwoman Pam Duquette. Counselor, Counselor Rick Howarth is absent this evening. Under the city's adopted code of ethics and civility, as the presiding officer, I'm to identify the law enforcement personnel in the room who'll be serving as Sergeant of Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have the pleasure of Police Chief Corey Kuhn. Thank you, Corey. Everyone, please rise and stand. We will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
That I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have general announcements and reports. Are there any announcements from council?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to shout out and a huge thank you. Marilyn Sabella will be celebrating their forty-fifth anniversary at Eve's Leaves, which is quite the feat. And Marilyn has always been a wonderful supporter of all the nonprofits in the community. So, thank you. And I think the celebration's on May eleventh, I believe.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. Anyone else out there? I would congratulate Council President Rule on her son's achievement. Klein, I believe, broke the high school pole vaulting record. Is that correct?
He did.
And?
And then he beat himself and broke it again.
Wow. What's, what's the height?
The current record is fourteen feet, nine inches.
Wow. Impressive. Give a congratulation for all of this.
I will. Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll take a few minutes from to hear some quick reports from staff. Anyone back there want to give us an update on happenings at City Hall? There's a lot going on. In the planning, he's a development director, Jason Welker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I've got some updates for you tonight from our various teams in the C P D Department, Community Planning and Development. We'll start with the building. Okay, good. First, we have a, an announcement of from our building department, and that has to do with staffing. Many of you have probably heard that our building official for the last several years, Christine Coolman, has announced her resignation. And Friday will be her final day. So I wanted to give council a chance to thank Christine tonight and bid her farewell and good luck in her next steps. We're likely to continue to see her signature on certificates and permits at the city for a while because we're going to be contracting with Christine to act as our signature authority for, from the building department. And we also have some really good news in the building department. And I don't know if he's still here. We have, the mayor has of, has as of today appointed our building inspector Pete Scone as interim building official. So Pete Scone has nearly all the qualifications needed to be a building official. And in the next several months, he will be pursuing training so that he can sit for his building official, official certification and examination later this year. And if he so chooses at that time, apply to be the permanent building official. So we are actually all set. It should be fairly business as usual in the building department over the next several months. But there will be personnel changes. The opening that we have now is a building inspector. So we're working with H R and the mayor and the building team to determine next steps for, for replacing Pete Scone as our building inspector. So if you get the chance, say thanks to Christine in the next couple of days and wish her luck in her next step. She'll still be living in the area, just doing some remote consulting work, including for the city, for the, for the medium term. Okay. In the planning department, planning team within the department, we've, we've had some really exciting interviews lately with planner applicants. We actually have an accepted offer for an assistant planner. We're just working out details with that candidate, and we hope to bring her on board in the next couple of weeks or months at the latest. The mayor and I interviewed a senior planner candidate yesterday, which was a very exciting and highly qualified candidate. So we're, we're moving forward with interviews and trying to find somebody with the right qualifications and with the right, that we feel is the right fit for that senior planner position as well. But the, the future looks pretty bright on the planning team at City Hall. Okay, our rec superintendent is down her third week on the job. She's just excelling with getting many of our long dormant recreation programs off the ground. She gave me some updates for you tonight. The registration that we have open right now is for men's and women's softball. Doubles tennis registration is almost full. I think those begin next week. I myself am registered for doubles tennis. There are lots of sub spots open though. So if you know anybody who did not get signed up to play doubles yet, there are still like thirty spots open for substitutes. We have a free community track meet on May fifteenth. Registration is now open for that. Registration is, the deadline is May twelfth. That's for the kids, of course. Also in rec programming, Sandpoint is supporting the school district's bicycle rodeo on Friday at three o'clock. That is actually happening in Park Church Parking Lot, just in between Travers and Centennial Parks. Following the bike rodeo, the city and Pondre Peddlers will be celebrating the grand opening of the Bicycle Skills Course, the Tiny Wood Bicycle Skills Course, which has actually been open for the last week, but we're going to do a little ribbon cutting and thank you for all the supporters of that on Friday at five. So we invite council members to make their way over to Travers Park. Check out the Tiny Wood Bicycle Skills Course, five o'clock on Friday. Also, in the rec department or team, we have Morage. We had sixteen slips open, just for your information, between our two marinas this year. And there were over fifty people on the waiting list for public slips at the marina. And as of last year, the city adopted a policy that city residents get priority for those slips. So our Parks and Rec Administrator, Kami Amit, conducted the lottery drawing, and those sixteen slips have now been claimed. We actually have, we're waiting one person to determine by May third whether or not they're going to accept their slip. So that, that, not surprisingly, is a very successful program for the city, and we're excited to welcome sixteen new slip renters this year. Finally, there will be a newsletter coming out in mid-May for summer rec programs. So anybody subscribed to our newsletter will be learning about our summer program options here in a couple of weeks. Okay, another department is our planning department here in the city. We've got some updates on developments in the planning world for you. I know this is always something that public is interested in, and on council, you're always wondering what's coming down the pipe in terms of new developments or past developments that might be coming online. Some of the ones we can expect to see very soon are the big toy condos. Those, this is a long ongoing project up there by the airport on the corner of Schweitzer Cut Off and Boyer, the certificates of occupancy for those. Well, their storage, condo minimized storage units are going to be issued very soon. The Tribute Building, that's the development just north of Super One, a hundred and seventeen or so. Multifamily with commercial downstairs, those building permits could be issued as soon as next week. So we should expect to see equipment and, and work begin on tribute here in the next few weeks. Some old ones that you are familiar with, the West Point Place. Pam, this is the development just up there on Ontario. You, you guys should be expecting to see that on June nineteenth for a final plat. So there's also an updated stormwater management plan for that development, which I think will satisfy some of the concerns that were shared about the created wetland there, just east of that development. So that, that's coming back on June nineteenth. Another one coming on June eighteenth to planning and zoning, we are looking at the new hotel at City Beach. So fifty-six Bridge Street, that development is currently known as. And that conditional use permit should be coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission on June eighteenth. Our, our contract planner Darren is into the final stages of doing his compliance review on that. So that's a, a big one. So keep your eyes open for that. Few weeks before that comes to the commission, those, that whole C U P packet will be posted online for the public to see. Okay. Finally, we have the Arts Cultural Historic Preservation Team within the C P D Department, which also includes updates on committees and commissions for you. So I'll be sharing a couple of updates on those right now. In the arts realm, we have an exciting project that our A C H P Officer Heather Upden has spearheaded, and that is the Paint the Plows Project. She's partnered with the, with the Streets Crew to get our city plows down to City Beach where the, the folks at Creations are leading a group of local artists to paint the insides of those snowplows. And yes, we're aware that once you start pushing snow with them, the, the paint will probably start to chip off, but it's, it's really just about having those plows in our community for the next several months before it snows again. So even, that was supposed to start this week, but the hail and the cold temps have made it impossible to do painting. So that has been rescheduled to the end of May. There'll be a lot of kids involved with the painting of the plows as well. Okay, finally, we have committees and commissions. You saw on the agenda tonight, we're bringing you code amendments for the pedestrian bicycle committee and the Sustainability Committee. Those are the two that we have so far updated the code language around. We still have the Urban Forest Committee, the Parks and Rec Commission, and the, sorry, the Urban Forestry Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, and the A D A Committee. Those are going to be coming to you within the next couple of council meetings for code amendments. And the process is going, behind the scenes, the process involves intaking applications to be on those committees. I've got an update on that for you. The, the committee, the, the committees that we have the most applications for are bicycle pedestrian commit, committee. Sorry, I get committee commission confused all the time. And the Parks and Rec Commission, those have well more than the minimum of five have already applied. The Sustainability Committee has received the minimum of five, but the A D A and the Urban Forestry are still a little bit short. So we're still looking for residents to apply to be part of Urban Forestry, A D A, and Sustainability could still use some more applicants as well. I have reviewed all the committee commission applications and tabulated them, provided recommendations to the mayor in the next several weeks or a couple of months. He'll be reaching out to individual candidates and likely making appointments sometime early summer is what we're going for. Behind the scenes, before we can convene committees and commissions, we also need to train admin assistants on how to clerk public meetings. Melissa's done a great job of, of spearheading that effort. And we've been working with our staff to determine which staff members will act as what we're calling S M Es or subject matter experts, which will basically be the staff person assigned to each of those committees' commissions. So we've got quite a few steps from code amendments to training, admin assistance and clerking, to assigning staff members to each committee commission, to the mayor reaching out and determining who he intends to appoint to each of these. But our goal is to have these off the ground and meeting sometime by late summer this year. So it is very much moving forward behind the scenes. Okay, that's all I have for you guys. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Director Welker. I just want to say first, thank you. Thanks to you. I had envisioned this format, and, and you are kind of fulfilling that as one of the six department heads that I hope to build out here. And this is exactly the kind of breadth of information, unfiltered, that I just love. I hope the council loves it, just getting to hear just, you know, the breadth of all the work that our fabulous staff is doing here. You've done just an incredible job getting up to speed, taking on a ton. So thank you so much. And I wanted to say thank you to Christine. Christine, our building official, it was, it was a bit of a gut punch to hear that she'd been offered another job and would be moving on, but Christine is was also invaluable to where we're at today. Christine has curated and developed a process and tracking for all of our building and planning review processes that is just spectacular. It's, it's amazing. Christine, thank you so much. And if you don't know the greatness that we are sitting in front of Christine, I learned, I should have known this, but she did the building site, some of the building safety review on the Apple campus and some really significant projects in the world. So we've been so lucky to have you, Christine. I wish you tons of luck and look forward to working with you in the future. And also, just a quick shout out to, to Heather, who's been working on the committees a ton, and Maeve is also working, you know, you wouldn't believe the hours our staff are putting in because they're so committed, just with all the projects at the, the park going on. So those folks plus all of our staff, it's budget season. There's a ton going on. It's literally, it's, it's active every minute of the day here. So thanks, Jason. Any questions for Jason?
Councilwoman Duquette.
I have one. I think the painting of plows is going to be amazing. I'm wondering about the paint chipping. So we're using environmentally sound paint?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Okay, we should be, right?
I think so, yeah.
It will not be led by.
I, because if it's going to be chipping off into the storm water, I mean.
No good points. Yeah, I'm sure it'll be a water-based paint.
Okay. It'll be fun to see those.
All right.
Mr. Mayor. Council President.
Jason, I just wanted to let you know that as far as the A D A, I have a couple contacts for you that if they themselves don't want to be on the committee, I know some of them don't live within city limits, but they may be really good resources to get some parents that have children or spouses that have disabilities and such. So if you can make yourself a little note that we get together and I'll share those names with you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Trevor.
Not so fast. You mentioned the West Point and addressing the concerns about the wetlands. I'm glad to hear that. We had also talked a little bit about a public pathway through there.
Oh, yeah.
Has there been any progress on that?
I would have to look into that.
Okay.
Yeah. I can, I can look into that. Get back to you.
Okay, thanks. Sure. And great job on the committees. Really excited to see those come back.
Yeah.
And I'm very curious to know what the determining factor between a committee and a commission is.
So, so a commission has a master plan that they oversee the implementation of. So we have an A D A transition plan at the city. So the A D A Commission is responsible for overseeing that. We have a Parks and Rec master plan at the city. The Parks and Rec Commission is responsible for overseeing that. We don't necessarily have a sustainability master plan, although it is a chapter of our comp plan. So the Sustainability Committee will advise on how the city is doing, addressing the, the comp plan chapter in the, or the chapter in the comp plan about sustainability. That's, that's an example, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. There are other staff. Should I see? It's a race between Cheryl and Holly.
Ryan.
Go.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Holly.
Good evening. Holly Ellis, Construction Manager. Good update for council tonight. We heard from L T A C. Back in December of two thousand twenty-three, we submitted for a child pedestrian safety grant. This was going to continue our efforts on the east side of Division Avenue. Last summer, we improved the sidewalk from north of the highway to Superior. Our application to L T A C for this child pedestrian safety grant was to continue that project again on the east side of Division. New sidewalk from Superior to Pine. And they, L T A C initially thought that they had one point eight million dollars to fund. House Bill seven seventy provided ten additional million, ten million dollars additional to this budget. So they're working out the funding. So they did not release the final award, but it does seem that we're positioned really well. They did give us the final ranking. We ranked nine out of forty-eight. It appears that they would have funding to fund all of the projects, but that seems to be good news. As soon as we get the final award, I'll let you know, but seems like we'll be able to move that project forward this summer, if that's when the funding becomes available.
That's exciting, Holly. Thank you. And just on that project that creates, right now, there's no planter. It goes curb right to the sidewalk. And that creates a planting strip, a little separation between the sidewalk and, and the curb. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So in addition to that storage space, that's good for snow. It also keeps the sidewalks easier to clear in the winter from snow. It also creates a better walking area. It's a little more comfortable than walking right on a curb line. The other thing that this will provide is a little bit of a narrow travel lane, so it should reduce traffic speeds in that area. And there's also a place for tree plantings.
Awesome. Good job, Holly. That's exciting.
Thanks.
Any questions for Holly?
Thanks, Holly.
Right. Hi, Cheryl.
Hello. Just a few updates for you. An update on the citywide striping. The contractor has began the the prep on division, scrubbing some of the lines there. But they are unable to actually do the citywide striping at the moment because weather's not cooperating. It, you know, if the weather doesn't change, we're kind of looking at maybe the week of the thirteen, where the temperatures and the rain chances will allow them to do that. But that's a little ways away. But that would be ideal because of, it would be done before lost in the fifties, especially the downtown core. As far as the snow blower R F P that we put out, we actually canceled that R F P because we, we thought through it some more. We talked with the city mechanic. And we were able to find a solution to fix the snow blower that we have. And we found an engine, so we're working with a shop for that. And then that will allow us to purchase a couple pieces of equipment for the, the roads, a dura-patcher and a crack sealer machine. So we felt that that was a good pivot and just repair the snow blower that we have. So we are currently working that out, and hopefully at the next council meeting, we'll have some equipment for council approval considerations. Update on the timber sale. It is on hold due to the road conditions. It's just too muddy, so it's, it's on hold for now, which is typical for this time of year. The Lead Lock Lease, Austin, the facilities and park supervisor and I went over to Lead Lock and did a tour. And we saw some needed areas of attention that we're going to work on this season. Nothing significant. We're currently working on the new lease agreement with Lead Lock. That should be coming soon to a future council meeting in the not-too-distant future. And Marcia Snack Shack. There are a couple potentials that we're talking to for being a concessionaire. And it's, right now, we're just having conversations with them, and hopefully we can find somebody that will be able to go in there soon for this season. And finally, the band screen that was council-approved several months ago for the wastewater treatment plant that has been received finally, and it, it's been about nine months since it's been on order. And that helps with the inlet portion of the plant, which is a critical piece. That installation has begun, so hopefully that'll be fully installed within the next week or two. And they could not be happier for that.
Yeah.
And I think that is about it for my updates.
Thank you, Cheryl. I can't wait for the dura-patching. Encourage anyone in the public or the council to look at, up at dura-patcher on YouTube. This thing is our best hope to put our roads in a drivable condition at the least cost. Basically, it's like a a blower that blows gravel with epoxy and asphalt, hot asphalt, and you can literally fill these huge cracks and it's, it's better than that cold patch they put in. So really exciting. And then the crack sealer obviously will be a tool that can help us maintain and preserve our pavement as best as we can. So great work looking for creative solutions to, to finding ways to pay for that. And any questions for Cheryl?
I did just, would you refresh my memory or instruct me first on Lead Lock?
Oh, that's a whole discussion. Basically, the city owns some property out industrial way. Used to, one of the buildings is a former Bonner Business Incubator. I think it was fifteen. We wound that down, Lead Lock expanded. They produce specialty medical equipment. If you ever go into surgery, it's likely you might have a Lead Lock device on your body. They sell them all over the world and employ a bunch of people here, making cutting-edge medical equipment. And
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yes, it was, it was a great tour. Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Eric Bush.
Good evening, councilors. I've got a handful of items to update you on this evening. The first one is on Monday, Tuesday of this week, we executed a contract with Sewell Engineers, one of our local engineering firms. This is for a wastewater mainline replacement in the alley north of Pine between Ruth and Boyer, just right across the street over here, pretty much. That's a pretty small project in scope. We're just basically tearing out an old wastewater mainline and replacing it with a new one. It's just in poor condition. It's been a long-range project in our capital plans. So that's under contract now, and we'll be in design for about two months and bid it and try and slide in with construction this fall before we get bad weather again. Additionally, we'll also be finishing up a contract, hopefully tomorrow or Friday, with Stan Tech engineers. Stan Tech is our engineer, one of our engineering companies that does wastewater modeling for the city. We did a large wastewater modeling project last year that basically inventoried and shows how changes to the system will affect how the system functions. We're signing a contract with Stan Tech for the Great Northern Project. We're modifying our wastewater treatment system on Great Northern, increasing capacity primarily. So we need to make sure those impacts aren't affecting downstream or upstream systems elsewhere within the city. So it's, nothing really is produced out of that as far as like a construction drawing. It more so says we've confirmed that the new changes of your wastewater mainline won't result in any negative consequences. Pretty important to know those sort of things, and it's a pretty small study. It won't take them but about a month to put that together and refine. So that'll, that just is kind of another step along the line of moving the Great Northern Project forward. Additionally, the one grant that we are applying for, the Chrissy Grant, is open right now. It closes May twenty-ninth. I had a meeting with our B N S F folks and H D R engineers that's writing the grant application for us on behalf of B N S F this afternoon. The application is coming along, coming along very well. J U B engineers will be sending them cost estimate information on Friday. And that will kind of inform our ultimate grant request, the amount of dollars we're requesting in this application. I haven't seen those numbers yet. I'll see them Friday, and we'll, you know, I'll be discussing with our engineers where things stand. But that's a, just kind of another step in the process. Great Northern is going very well. There's a lot of moving parts. It's a very complicated project, but we're doing a pretty good job of keeping everything moving forward in search for a construction, hopefully starting next fall. And additionally, finally, Friday afternoon, the Urban Forestry Grant that council approves, the application for, was submitted. The response times are expected next week on May sixth. So it's a pretty quick turnaround. We're feeling pretty positive, hoping for good news. And if so, I've got a lot of stuff that I want to be working on with urban forestry. So I'll be excited if that comes through, that we can get moving on that and make some impact. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Eric. Great work. And I know you have a lot, a lot of balls in the air. Way to keep going on it all. You, I, you just, you glanced over some of it. I know there's more, so thanks for all your.
There's a lot. I can talk for hours if you want. Thank you.
Brandon. City Engineer.
Hello, Brandon Stagland. Okay, so I think we're, we're probably all aware of our water system. It has some pressure issues in the north part of the water system in Pondre and Cootney. So I just wanted to bring up it for discussion purposes to start that one of our goals in the short term is to move forward with trying to figure out a solution to that. Possibly some sort of agreement with the other jurisdictions that we serve water to. It's been going on for a long time, pretty much my entire life, where we've served water outside of our system, and it's hard to, to solve some of those pressure issues, and it's limiting our ability, or will limit our ability to provide water connections to some of those external areas of our system in the future. So look for that to be on the agenda items coming up. It's going to be a very long process that involves engineering reports and discussions and workshops and so forth. Also, a lot of people might notice that Um, also, a lot of people might notice that there is a lot of construction happening on North Boyer. And um, the last couple weeks on the side of the road up Ella and through the central, north central part of town. Um, just so everybody's aware, um, there's a fiber company called Intermount Infrastructure Group. That's doing a large, what they call fiber backbone. From um, you know, through the entire Panhandle, so they've, they've come from, out from Newport Dover. Through Sandpoint and they're heading all the way out to Knox and Montana. Um, so we give them a permit to do that and you'll, you'll see there's some stuff that looks like it's been disturbed in the right away. Side of the road, outside the curb, potholes, um, for them to find utilities. That part of their permit is that they're supposed to be replacing that stuff uh, to the existing condition. So we'll be following up on that as we close the project out, but just so everybody's aware, you'll see some conduit sticking out of the ground every once in a while. It's not gonna be like that forever. Um, and then uh, Cheryl's uh, update reminded me of the striping. Um, I know that I had presented previously for the, the bike lane striping on Division a couple of times. And I had talked about double, double white, um, like a two foot buffer between the bike lane and the travel lane. Uh, but we, we decided to go against that and just do one single fog line all the way up and a wider bike lane. And the reason for that is because there's sections where we have turn lanes that a double lane actually makes it so that the bike lane is. Even smaller than what it is now, which is, would make it far below standard. So it doesn't really make sense to go between two lane, two, two white stripes, one white stripe and kind of transition back and forth. Confusing, so um, look, look for that to come up and any comments or. Uh, concerns or complaints about that can be directed to me if you get it from anybody.
Brandon, uh, when's that, when are we expecting that actual painting to occur?
Well, uh, like Cheryl said, we're, we're really waiting on the weather, so there's a.
It'll, it's the same contractor?
Or, yeah, the, sorry, yeah, the contractor that we hire to touch up all our yellow lines everywhere. We included that in the contract to do um, short sections of green paint boxes to notify people that it's a bike lane all the way through. Um, so yeah, that's just part of that, it's just wrapped in.
That's gonna be a dramatic change to Division, so the public and all of you council members may hear comments or questions.
And I guess just taking a step back from the bigger picture. Also, the, the point of this restriping is that it's kind of um, striping the lanes, the way that they're gonna be when we build out Division. The whole way, the way that we did next to the high school, that Holly did that project on the, the first section. So the plan is eventually, I don't know how long it's gonna take, but we're gonna keep doing that in phases all the way. And um, where the stripe is gonna be that we restripe it today is gonna roughly be where the curb line is in the future. So, taking some of that space away from vehicles and giving it to pedestrians and, and. Plant, uh, planting strips.
Awesome. Thanks Brandon, I know we'll be seeing you later tonight, um, any questions for Brandon?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Please Chief Coon. You changed, I don't know.
I was wearing my uniform all day and I said, I'm not, done. God, one of the exciting things that we did today, just to, to recap is we did a, a fake scenario, uh, traffic stop. Uh, which we got some drugs out of, we did that a couple of weeks ago, we took it to court today. As a training exercises with our high school students, so they brought over the government classes today. They actually got to see a magistrate judge run through like a pre-talk, pre-trial conference. Uh, they got to see him get bound over for trial, uh, the district judge came in, we put on a, a mini trial for. There was probably fifty or sixty of our kids from the high school that came over, the, it was, it was really awesome. They were all actually, for teenagers in high, in high school to be actually engaged in what was going on. Sometimes could be a challenge when you start talking about like law and the legalities. Um, I was excited, they were all actively engaged, they were paying attention, um, very beneficial. Uh, so I appreciate the judges actually taking time out of their day to partner with us and getting, and the high school itself. For getting our kids over there and getting that experience for them to see what it's like to, to be in a courtroom, to meet the judges, meet the prosecutors. And to kind of go through that, so that was kind of a fun, fun event that we did. Usually I stand up and we talk about like stats and arrests and convictions, so I thought I'd do something different today. Um, part of our budgeting is usually our training, and so I thought I would cover just some of the things that we've done for training last month. And so we had our school resource officer attend an active shooter training and reunification down in Courtland Lane. So how to prepare for and plan for our students in a, in a ma, in a mass disaster. Being re unified with our parents, which is one of our biggest challenges that we have. We had six of our officers attend leadership training that we hosted through, through ICRIM. And that was a four day class on how to, how to improve our leadership styles. We had sent four officers to Courtland Lane, three of our community resource officers and one officer to verbal judo and de-escalation. Uh, to help teach us how to de-escalate, calm down, work with and communicate. As you guys know, probably ninety percent of what we do involves around those skillset. And it's something that we continue to train on and learn and improve, so that was good. We have uh, summers coming, so our bike officers are gonna get out on bikes again, uh, they did a bike course with EMS. So they spent yesterday out riding around, uh, learning how to ride their bicycles again, jumping, stepping off of them. Dismounting, which I'll think sometimes we take for granted, but if you're hurrying to go someplace, those skillsets, if you don't practice them. Go out the window and we tend to crash, fall over and. And you have all your gear on, so yeah, how to dismount, how to get off quickly. Um, we did a wave of tow clips years ago because we had a hard time getting out of tow clips fast enough to, if they could do our job, we'd fall over. Um, we sent to one of our community resource officers to a seatbelt training and it focused really on like car seats and how to make sure that they're. Put incorrectly, so if people have questions on how to install a car seat, they can come in and we can help walk them through that. Now, we had courtroom testimony, so we sent our new officers, we hosted a class ourselves on how to, how to prepare a report, how to go to court, how to testify. Um, some of those, some of those things, we had firearms training. Um, for our department, so it, it's, it's important that we always talk about the one side, but we tend to forget of all the other stuff that we continually do. Um, and that was just last month, and if you look at our, our next eight months, it's something similar to that. Where we constantly have ongoing training and refresher courses, trying to keep us up to, up to speed on all the trends. So that's really just what I wanted to report, Bond, was just some of the training efforts that we, that we're doing at the police department side.
Uh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, uh, I, I just had a comment that um, maybe the new Tiny Woods grand opening can be appropriate training grounds. For police getting on their bikes next year and I'm sure Jason will volunteer to be out there for that.
Oh, I'm, I'm assuming they'll be out there, probably when.
You gotta work on your skills, right?
I, I had the opportunity to visit with some of our officers and uh, they, they really like uh, sort of the, being on the bikes. It's just a, they were explaining to me, it's a whole different feel, you're in the community, you're, you're hearing things, you're seeing things, you're meeting people. Sounds like it's a great, great element of our program.
It is a great program.
Well, uh, thank you so much Chief, uh, appreciate all that you do. Is that it for the back row? Great. Good, well, um, I, I also just uh, wanted to mention um, a couple of things. Um, tomorrow, we are distinguished to be hosting a mayor's tour. Um, mayors from throughout the state will be in this room. Um, Sarah and myself and uh, other staff will be presenting on. Uh, sort of all the things we do in Sandpoint, the challenges we faced. We'll have, uh, I think it's close to thirty mayors and finance directors and city council members from all over the state visiting us. For a couple of days, they'll be staying uh, in and around Sandpoint. And um, that's, that's gonna be an exciting uh, day tomorrow, so if you see a bunch of uh, new folks in town, that's what's going on. Uh, and uh, Brandon, I believe, is he still here? No, he left for a minute, I think it's Brandon's one year anniversary today, so you see him, let him know, congratulations. With that, um. At this time, we'll move into the public forum portion of the meeting. Which allows the public to address the council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not included on the agenda. If anyone in chambers wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting. You must complete a comment signup form and hand it to staff, if you're on Zoom and wish to speak during the general public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda. A total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of this meeting. If you'd like to speak and do not have the opportunity to do so, we'll provide that opportunity to reopen the public forum at the end of our regular meeting. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum, the rules are posted here in the chambers at the entrance doors. In summary, I'd like to ask those participating in our meeting this evening to please be pleasant and respectful. Not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be boisterous or disruptive, no calling out, clapping, holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that council cannot take testimony on any planning relating matters outside of an official public hearing. Public comment needs to be kept to comments only, please no questions or debate. You're always welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. During public forum and also during the public comment opportunities during this meeting, each pick will have up to three minutes. When it's your turn, please state your name and whether you reside within the city of Sandpoint limits. With that, Madam Clerk, um, has anyone signed up to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Matt Loem.
Hi, everybody, good to see you again. Um, my name is Matt Loem, citizen of Sandpoint, been here before. Um, we've all agreed that uh, we're gonna be searching for non-lethal solutions to the goose poo problem at City Beach. And um, we've done some correspondence and uh, the idea of making a dog patrol has seemed uh, good to everybody. I would call it Paw Patrol, but there's a whole franchise called Paw Patrol, I just learned, so gotta change the name. But the idea would be that we would have uh, jacketed dogs, dogs wearing a jacket on a leash with a professional hands. They're also identifying him or herself to the public when they really, the, they will be walking City Beach. When they see a flock of geese, they'll release the dog, the dog will chase the geese, they'll call the dog back, put them back on a leash and off they go. Spend an hour or so doing that, next person comes in. This uh, program has been suggested um, to, to council before and, and more than uh, the majority have gotten back to me. With great feedback and I appreciate all you guys, I won't call it by name, but you've been amazing and Justin especially with incredible leads. I have a coffee date with Jane Fritz tomorrow, we've already spoke, spoken on the phone. She says the dog idea is great and it's gonna work, except the biggest obstacle is politics. Justin said, hey, this is a great idea and then he could speak for himself, um. There is obstacles, politics, so what I want to say is I believe it is now incumbent on this council. To get the dog program on this agenda, let's move on it quick. There is a superstar team assembled and they are all members of the Sandpoint community. We have um, from Shake a Paw, which is the pet store, beneath the pet store is the dog trainers, this woman Rebecca. She's worked with Jane Fritz in the past and they have a wonderful rapport and have had great success. The dog policy was changed thirty years ago to, to no dogs allowed, that what Jane said, he said it's about thirty years that there's been a horrible goose poo problem around here. So the team, that we have an incredible team, I've also reached out, uh, uh, another suggestion, I got to Better Together Animal Alliance. Mandy Evans is away uh, on vacationing, but wrote to me that she likes the sound of that idea and wants to get involved, I'll let her speak for herself. So if I were the mayor and had everything my way, I would probably ask for some type of special and temporary variance to do a trial. And that trial could be conducted with the best dogs in the town, everyone here has the best dog in the town, but I mean the best trained dogs, right, most ready to do it. By the best handlers in the town, we could begin that tomorrow, the thing that we're rushing for is the geese, is the hatchlings, right? They're coming, we can't start the policy when there's hatchlings and then the geese will fight to protect them and it's gonna get ugly and loud and rowdy. If we could start before then, that would be wonderful. If we can't start before then, let's just do this thorough. If it takes a long time to get it through, it's not too late to get this right. So I would try to move before these hatchlings get born, but if not, please put it on the agenda, you guys all have my phone number right now. And uh, let's, let's reach, uh, you know, let's get a program that brings, there, there's gonna be cooperation from the city and from everyone, the program's gonna be great. And I think very effective and kids and families will have the park back, which is what I think we need.
Matt, thank you so much. And uh, trying, trying to resolve this issue, I really appreciate your uh, persistence and uh. Um, of the many things that Director Welker has on his hat, uh, this falls into the park, so I'm sure we'll be seeing something.
Thank you, alright.
So is, is this something we can talk about? Um, at this point, or does it have to be on the agenda? Because as he said, it is.
Well, it would take, it would take some thoughtful, um.
Getting it going.
Action, uh, in terms of reviewing code to make sure we have the right procedures in place and that we aren't violating our own code. But um, uh, it's something I'm fully supportive of and I'm sure in the near future we'll see something coming forward that will. Uh, authorize and.
Not before the hatchlings.
Um, you know, I don't know exactly when they hatch, I saw across from my house, they're already hatched, they're out there swimming right now, so. Except the coyotes get quite a few of them, but um, um, we'll do it as soon as we practically can.
Janine Shepherd.
Janine Shepherd, Bonner County, Mayor, councilors. I just wanted to take a moment to pray, I've got some uh, really uh, things that I want to praise the Lord for tonight, so if you join me, I'd love it. Uh, Lord, we just take this time to pause and give you glory, Lord, for all that you have done and all that you will do. We see your hand at work in our city and we want to praise you for all you are doing. Your word talks about your will being done on earth as it is in heaven. We want Sandpoint as it is in heaven, bring heaven to earth, Lord, that's what we want. We see your hand in the situation with the Cedar Street Bridge, Lord, the purchase of the bridge and filling it with more businesses, bringing hope. And life back to the bridge, you have taken a rough situation and transformed it for your glory. We thank you for your faithfulness to us. And we also thank you for the faithfulness of those who have been your hands and feet at the bridge. We see you also, Lord, in the revival happening with the youth of Sandpoint. That ten different churches' youth groups, over a hundred and fifty kids are meeting together each month to pray. Worship and learn and grow in you, you have lit a fire and the faithful people of God are stoking the flame. Help it to continue to burn bright for your glory. We see your glory in the National Day of Prayer event tomorrow at Farman Park. Where people of God from all over the county come with no political agenda. But to praise you heavenly Father and pray to you, we want the glory to be yours. We thank you for the mayor and the city council members and ask that your hand be upon this meeting. Bless them, Lord, bless each one and bring heaven to earth in their lives. In Sandpoint as it is in heaven, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse Warburton.
Hi Jesse.
Hello Mayor, councilors. Uh, I wrote this out today because I get forgetful and forget some of the points I wanted to make. And I'm gonna jump down into a, a lower paragraph. Nothing brings people together more like music and the performing arts. In this day of hateful and heated opinion, dividing even family and friends. Sandpoint could become a place for people to forget their differences and share the experience of enjoying quality entertainment. I'm Jesse Warburton, also known as Brother Music. I am an area busker, which is a street musician. For the past several years, I believe Sandpoint could benefit greatly if the city would encourage street musicians. And other entertainment to come into our little paradise and bring their music and other performing arts. To share, enhancing the creative atmosphere of our area. What Sandpoint City could provide would be the locations and electrical power that these performers could use. For Sandpoint to become known as a hub for music and its festive atmosphere. Would take the cooperation of local and regional performers to use this opportunity to expose their talents. And to familiarize our area listeners for possibly future bookings. If this effort became a trend, Sandpoint would become a destination on the map of both performers. And entertainment seekers. Promoting more events and bringing into our area both talent and interest. Helping to create a more lively, festive environment. Specifics of how to bring about this idea would need to be worked out by city planners. If I can be helpful in any way. If I can be helpful in any way possible to bring these ideas into reality, please keep me advised and I will be available. Thanks again for changing the city codes that allow me and others to express our music. The only thing I didn't include in here is if there isn't interest in what I'm proposing, maybe having a day of busking. Court Lane has a day of busking, but they don't have very good ordinances. If we had a day of busking and we advertise it, maybe more local people would come out and come to these different locations that are set up and we'd have a day of busking. Any questions?
We don't hate questions, Brother Music. Jesse, but thank you so much for sharing your enthusiasm and those ideas with us and we'll see what the council wants to do.
More music in town. Good idea. Rebecca Holland?
Good evening, Ms. Holland, can you hear us?
Good evening, council, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to quickly thank you for bringing the staff reports, having staff report to the community. I think that is just so needed, you can see what's coming in advance. And with the new link that you guys have made for the meeting with the agenda, making it so much easier. I think a lot more, a lot more people would be listening in and as I am by Zoom and learning what's going on in the city. So that in itself, I just wanted to say thanks. Real quickly, when Cheryl and Brandon mentioned striping, I just would like to say that I hope that this year the bike lanes and the sharrows that in some areas you cannot even see anymore are repainted. And one final pitch, I just want to say that with summer coming, I hope that the council is looking, the rec department, I should say, is looking at getting lifeguards for the summer beach time. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who have indicated a desire to speak during public forum.
Right. That will conclude the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, total amount of bills is one million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, reflecting four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents for regular payables and eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents for payroll. Does council have any questions or are there any items in the council wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schreiber.
I would like to remove item number nine.
You mean six H? This one?
Yeah, six H.
Six H.
threw me a loop with this new.
I know that.
Yeah, it's a little different.
Old agenda.
See, any other items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm clerk.
Maybe just confirm with the name of that item. Is it the proposed resolution for amendment to watershed license agreement with Pondray Pedlers?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Hearing non-entertain a motion to approve consent calendar less item six H.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, are we removing that and putting it on the agenda for discussion?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, because that wasn't clear to me, he just said remove it, so.
I assume, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, well, okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Dick, second by Council President Rule. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spurrel?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Looking for a little guidance here, when something's removed, do we take that up immediately or does it go to the end of the calendar? Is there a standard?
To new business action item.
New business action item, okay. So I guess there is no.
New business here, yes.
So we're gonna jump into old business, we'll take that up in a little bit. Councilman Schreiber. Under old business, this evening, we will revisit the staff recommendation for amendment of city code seven, three, ten, H and a proposal to reduce the sidewalk fee in lieu of construction. I'll now yield the floor to civil engineer Brandon Stugland. Stugland.
Stagland.
Stagland, geez.
Thanks.
And I hear happy anniversary is in order.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
You were gone, I need brought that up.
I tried to leave the room so I wouldn't be embarrassed.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We ate the cupcake without you.
Oh, yeah, there's cake. Okay, so it's, I'm glad that I'm here at a decent time. I know the last time I presented this, it was late at night and it's hard for you all to just be presented with something to get shoved in front of you to get passed. So it's, I'm glad that we, you had a chance to think about it a little bit, but to summarize, I'm still basically proposing that we change the code in three different ways. One of them is to reduce the fee for sidewalk in lieu of construction from a hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents a lineal foot to sixty dollars a lineal foot, which comes out to roughly twelve dollars a square foot, which based on previous previous bids that I've gotten for this type of work and I also verified with some standard construction estimating manuals that come out every year that tell you what things cost in different regions. It's more, this is more in line with what it would cost to do that sidewalk for a private property owner. The second one is, I think it's important that we can use these sidewalk in lieu fees for any sidewalk improvement or ramp or pedestrian infrastructure, not just ones that are identified in our capital improvement plans, because that severely limits my ability to use this money before it gets, it expires and it has to be returned to the person who paid it in the first place. And thirdly, I would like to clarify the language so that staff gets to make the decision on when the in-lufy gets paid or when we install sidewalk. And the reason for that is because the incentives for private property owners are different from the incentives that we have. We have a mandate, I believe, to make sure that sidewalk that we install connects to our network. And the private property owner doesn't necessarily have a reason to care about that. So those are the three things that I'd like to propose and if you have any questions, please let me know, concerns.
Thank you, Brandon. I do have one question, I'm sure the council will have some too, but assume.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to interrupt you, but is there any way we can pull that up? I'm very visual and.
I don't have my machine with me.
Do you want me to bring it up, Brandon?
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, thanks, because that.
I got a look at it, it just helps my brain process it.
It would help me too.
I can't find it.
And you wanted to look at the.
Just hit the language so I can, I mean, I read it the other day, but I like it in front of me when I'm making a final decision.
Brandon, so if I'm building a or improving a home, what's the threshold, twenty-five thousand for improvements that triggers it?
I'm gonna say this wrong, I thought it was twenty-five thousand. The building department takes the building permit in and they they run a calculation internally that, using the assessed value from the county. And they say, they tell me whether it's, triggers it or not, so I actually, I don't want to say the wrong thing, but I believe.
Okay, so you hit that threshold, you're the building new, that doesn't have a sidewalk, you're improving your home. You know, maybe there's not sidewalk on either side. You present and say, like you pay the in-lufy. Does something, and they go ahead and do that, something's recorded on their title or we track that internally so that ten years down the road, you know, that person does another improvement, they're not gonna be charged and said, put in your sidewalk now, we have the ability to track and maintain that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we, we've always tracked it internally, at least in the year that I've been here, through our permitting system that tracks by address every permit that any person has ever taken out of that address. So I create a dummy permit that basically makes it clear to anybody that opens that address up that in twenty-twenty-four, this person paid the in-lufy, this is how much they paid. But I, I'm glad you brought that up because my thought was that now that, I'm hoping we're gonna actually be using this a lot more often than I have in the past, I think I only did it a few times last year. Of all the building permits that we did, which was a lot. I'd kinda like to just have a letter that gets sent to the property owner. And then that also gives them some responsibility to hold on to it, I guess. We could also record it so that it comes up in a title search, I don't really have that all worked out yet.
Okay, well, no, that's just, I want to make sure that we come up and follow up with a procedure that has lots of redundancy.
Yeah.
Twenty years from now.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, right in that same realm is brought up and I've experienced this visually because my neighbor across the street was quite an amazing master gardener and landscaper, but in the process of giving me some wonderful things to look at, has put a lot of things in the right of way. So if there's an in-lufy, I would maybe like to see some language in this potential letter and in our stuff that because I don't think all property owners and maybe new homeowners realize that that's not theirs, so that anything that got put in the right of way was their responsibility to then remove so that then the city didn't have to spend extra money to do that when we decide to potentially put a sidewalk somewhere. So I don't, I, I know that's complicated. It's not always easy, there are plenty of places around town and you know them better than I do, I bet, where there's things in the right of way, so.
Yeah, I actually think that's a great idea and it's actually not that complicated, I think at the very least, when we issue the building permit, we have a condition on there that says either you have to build sidewalk or you've paid the in-lufy and you're not responsible for building sidewalk. And we could add language to that, that is on the building permit that gets issued to them that says, you know, don't build anything in the area that the sidewalk is gonna be at some point in the future, which is the first five feet on the outside of the right of way.
Or if they do, I would say that they're responsible financially for moving that and then that becomes a part of the record if it's in the permit, is that correct?
Okay. So I think that them accepting the, and I don't want to say anything wrong here, but I think them accepting the permit is kind of them agreeing to the conditions of it. So there's a little bit of a mechanism if we start issuing the building permits with that language directly on it.
Yep, and we may need to work with the.
Right, and I agree that there, there may need to be, but it seems like that we, that's kind of an existing problem within the city limits. So if we can just have that clarified more and, and I think it's just an educational thing for a lot of people. It's not intentional, but you know, you go out and spend a lot of money on your landscaping and then somebody comes by and says, we're putting sidewalk in here and you just don't realize it. So I think if it's more obvious and, and we're better educated, then everybody stays a little bit happier. And then my last comment is gonna be, I can't take credit for this, I have to give credit to Molly. So that, that, but I do think it's important.
Yeah, Molly brought it up to me as well, so.
Okay.
A great idea.
Okay, so we can kind of get that in there somewhere. Great.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Trevor?
Yeah, I have a question, so obviously if there's not an existing sidewalk, this ordinance is gonna come into play, but is there a threshold with there is an existing sidewalk that is in a state of disrepair? That we would trigger this as well?
Yeah, so if there are, if there's sidewalk, the policy right now is I go out and look at it and if I think it needs to be replaced, then they have to replace it, even if there's a broken sidewalk in front of their house. There are some rules as far as the height that a panel, you know, there's rules, the the accessibility rules say that a lip can't be above this amount and it's a pretty small threshold. So it's, there's not really, I don't, I don't know of a better way to do it than just staff. You know, the, the public works director or the city engineer says the sidewalk is no longer in good shape and we're gonna replace it. And I've done that already in the past.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. And so I have seen in some places where they'll shave down part of the sidewalk to reduce that lip. Is that something that we allow?
Yeah, in certain situations, they can grind it down if they think they can make it meet those, those rules for something minor. And in fact, we, I have not gotten, made this a priority yet, but there, there, we have had discussions about actually maybe hiring a company that does that professionally, that have specialized tools where we can say, here's the exact locations, you know, once a year, go around and grind these ones that the bike pad, bike ped committee has identified or that have been brought to a list that I've I, I kind of try to keep a list of when, when people call in with questions and complaints about sidewalks, I or anything really within the right of way, I try to at least keep a, you know, keep a summary of what people have requested and so. We have not got that, gotten that rolling forward yet. But I'd hope to do that at some point in the future.
Yeah, it sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
I do have one more comment about this ordinance and it, it does have to do with that last item at the discretion, discretion of the public works director or city engineer, kind of touched on it last time. I guess I'm not entirely comfortable with the idea, I mean, I, I understand when you might not allow somebody to take the in lieu of and say, no, you actually have to put in the sidewalk. But I guess I have an issue with a situation where we're telling someone that they're not allowed to improve their own property. And I get, I get the point that it's not actually their own property, it's the city's right of way, but there's a lot of evidence that very small improvements in a neighborhood can create momentum that encourages other neighbors to improve their properties as well. And, you know, I'm as frustrated with the sidewalks that don't serve any purpose as much as anyone, but it's tough for me to tell a homeowner that they're not allowed to put a sidewalk in front of their house. Is it a situation where they, they can put a sidewalk in, but they just also have to pay the in-lufy? Or is it literally restricted from improving that right of way?
My thought was that I would just tell them, because they have to get a separate permit to actually install the sidewalk. So when they go to actually do work in the right of way, they have to come back to me to get a permit and my thought, and I'm not a hundred percent stubborn on this, but my thought was that we just say, no, you're not allowed to build sidewalk if it doesn't connect to anything. I will say that even though I'm presenting this and I'm recommending this change, that number three that you're talking about is not the most critical in order to make this work. Numbers one and two passed independently with number three changed to say, you know, the, that the public works director, the city engineer can only make somebody install a sidewalk when they don't want to, not the other way around. That's not gonna make it so that I can't make this program work.
Sure.
I still, the reason I, I'm presenting it that way is because I, I still believe that I just, I want to avoid building one little section of sidewalk. I think that it's a burden on the homeowner to build something that by the time, typically by the time that sidewalk will be connected to the network and actually be usable by the public, it will have exceeded its useful life and need to be replaced anyway. So we're basically putting a burden that doesn't provide a whole lot of benefit, not no benefit, but not enough benefit, and that's my reasoning for it. But again, like I said, that, changing that one would not, changing the, not passing the first two would still make it so that I couldn't continue this program, but the third one is.
And Councilman Schreiber, I would also point out that we have an appeal process that I'd look at the attorney, our attorney, but I would imagine if someone really wanted to build it and didn't want to do the in-lufy, they could appeal that and come present to the council and say.
It's an administrative decision that could be appealed.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next proposal was. Yeah, that was gonna be my next proposal was, could we put something in here to say can be appealed to the mayor or, you know, something, just some process.
Yeah, a relief valve. So yeah, that's already part of uh, administrative decisions in the city, so that exists.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Spiro.
Thank you. A great conversation, guys. Sidewalk is always a fun one. Uh, I just think it's always funny that we have to, it's not our property, but we're responsible for it. Government's funding like that, but anyways, uh, how much is the appeal process?
I don't know that off the top of my head, Councilman.
I thought it was around a thousand dollars. I was hoping maybe somebody could correct me.
Oh, that seems very high.
Okay.
A certain, certain application, the appeal process or reconsideration is higher, but I don't have that off the top of.
Okay, yeah, as long as it's in a re- a reasonable price, I think that's important, but maybe it is, so.
Get the budget and fees.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman Rule as well, the right of way. I had the same question as well. I think that happens far more often than we think. Uh, especially with the construction of fences and trees that happen to be half in the right of way and half on the property. Um, Brandon, could you walk the public and myself through, you collect the in-lufy that goes into the dedicated fund for the purpose of constructing the sidewalk pathway ramp or infrastructure in the quadrant? How are these projects then selected? If you're going to like, let's say for a sidewalk here, you collect enough of the in-lufy, we go back to the quadrant of which you collected the in-lufy in to complete a sidewalk, uh, length of sidewalk or a project?
Right, well, um, I can say, I don't know how we've done it because we've never actually spent any of the money. So, but my plan is to just um, uh, every every time I see a sidewalk being constructed, whether through private development or through a city project sometimes, capital improvement project, just constantly have staff in the back of their head be thinking, hey, it might be a good idea to just finish this little project right here and use some of this in-lufy money. It really, the flexibility that um, that would provide to be able to just get stuff done and tack it on to other contracts is really valuable, I think. And that, I I'd seen a lot of situations last construction season where it's like, man, I can't make them go across this alley with a sidewalk. But I really wish that I could just get a few hundred bucks and say, hey, just finish the sidewalk connection. And I hadn't had the ability to do that. So it's really just a case by case basis. There's no there's not, uh, or I I had not planned on having a um, regimented process for selecting the projects. But uh, I will say that when the bike pedestrian committee gets going, that's one of the tasks that I wanted to maybe get a recommendation. Um, I suspect that that committee is very quickly gonna come up with a list of priority projects that they wanna see get done, smaller sidewalk projects, like, hey, we need a ramp over here. And I I had also planned on relying on that input to decide what to get done.
Or, and maybe the ADA as well, in terms of committees. Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question and I talked to you earlier about that, the language in number six. Just the word discretion, that it, I don't know, it doesn't work for me and I don't know how to explain. It sounds like you pick and choose, which you kind of are, but shouldn't shouldn't people know? I don't know, it's like, it's the word discretion. Shall be at the discretion of somebody, so that means they could or could not. And there's no parameters why they would or would not. It's just that word, I think, is vague and makes it more subjective and nobody really knows. Will I be at the discretion? Will I pay a in-lufy? And I don't know how to correct that. If it's a language, I just, that just isn't, it's not comfortable to me.
All right, I I definitely see what you're saying. I understand.
Um, I don't know how to change that.
I will say, like, wh- when I.
Welcome to government.
Said, welcome to government. I I I will say what I planned on doing was very simple, which was if it doesn't connect to an existing sidewalk, you're gonna pay the in-lufy. If there is an existing sidewalk network that it connects to, that's more than like one other property adjacent on either side of it.
I know it's a lot more verbiage, but that.
Um, yeah.
To me makes it.
And that would work, but i- in my experience, when you try to put that regimented language in there that say, like, this is when we do it, this is when we don't. There's oh, there's always gonna be situations where following that rule to the letter is, doesn't make any sense. If that ma- if that makes sense. So I'm not, I'm not against um, changing that so that it's not just fully at the decision of staff.
Just doesn't give anybody an idea. I don't know, if somebody said it's at my discretion, I would say, well, what does that mean?
Councilwoman Ducat, they're, they're, they're going to be required to either build or dedicate into the in-lufy.
Right, but it's just like, uh, so it's somebody's whim at that point, whether or not to me, I, if I was reading this and I wanted to do a sidewalk, I wouldn't know if public works director would want me to pay an in-lufy, but maybe the city engineer would not. It's the word discretion. Discretion, it's subjective.
In the building process, um, the 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 property would meet with staff, go over the project, understand their fee schedule. Um, and I think what we've discovered tonight is that if by chance uh, their their project required a sidewalk and at the discretion of the city engineer or public works director, they said, no, we want you to pay the in-lufy. And through this appeal process, if the if the property didn't like that idea, they could come before the council. And I would imagine if the council heard a property or saying, I really wanna build the sidewalk, not pay the in-lufy. I know for myself, I'd say, okay, you can build your sidewalk.
Does it say that in there?
Well, the the appeal process to an administrative decision uh, provides that relief.
Okay.
I think, I think it it covers your concern and also addresses the the rigidity of a the the English language that if it's not perfect, it's gonna end up being applied in a way that we may not always like the outcome. So I I personally like the flexibility.
Hey, I didn't like the word. Just, if it's make it more.
I I I was just thinking of a suggestion. I would also be um, comfortable and I I actually put that word discretion in there and I didn't, I couldn't really think of a better way to say it, but um, you could also say uh, if it, if the, if the property frontage does not connect to the existing sidewalk network, you're required to pay in in-lufy unless waived in writing by the public works director. And that accomplishes the same thing, but without just saying, making it seem like it's uh, you know, that I, it's my decision and I just decide what I wanted to.
I I prefer that language. I don't know what anybody else.
Um, yeah, I mean, I I completely understand uh, the concern with discretion, but you know, my personal opinion on this is at the end of the day, we're we're hiring professionals where this is their profession. We're hiring them because we think they're honest and I'm okay personally with their discretion, trust, otherwise, why would we have them on staff? And we have an appeal process. If they don't like it or they want to do something else, they can appeal to us, which then we would be making a discretionary decision regardless. It's gonna be up to us. So at the end of the day, I think we're fine with what it is. If, I believe we're all trying to be honest and we have professionals on staff, so that's my personal opinion if we wanna like keep moving forward.
Any other questions from the council? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Molly O'Reilly.
Good evening, Molly.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for for letting me speak for a couple of minutes. Um, I support the in-lufy. I, I think that I would rather have it say at the discretion than connecting because when Luther Park put in sidewalk that was would have been a full block on a shorter block, it didn't connect to anything. So it, you know, if it's a hundred feet or more, it's it's usable, even if it doesn't seem to connect. So I think some discretion and I think hopefully the pedestrian bicycle advisory committee will be asked to to think about this in the various quadrants and kind of what might apply in South Sandpoint, which has more sidewalk. It may be different from in North where wow, where pieces may be more valuable in different ways. I just don't know. So I think the length of the sidewalk is really important and it may be close to other sidewalk, if not quite adjoining. And if it got in, oh, we could put in this other piece and then we'd have connectivity. So there there may be a variety of things, so. And I would like to, I thank you for the credit, Deb, but I know you also had the idea and and Justin, you've noticed too that people fill space and if if it's not really clear to the current owner and subsequent owners that they are responsible for removing expensive landscaping where sidewalk goes, it's a terrible problem. If you look at retrofitted sidewalks like I'm finding, they weave around because of all these things that have gotten built. And so anything we can do to to preclude that down the line really makes a difference in in usability and in the satisfaction of the property owner. So thank you very much. Appreciate this. And I definitely support making the fee something that's usable.
Thank you, Molly.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has signed up to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will now ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending city code title seven, chapter three, section ten H. Sidewalk fee in lieu of construction, providing for severability and providing for publication and an effective date.
I would now entertain a motion that the ordinance passed its first reading by title only and that the summary is approved.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Council President Rule, second by Councilman Spiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Motion is passed. The ordinance is considered read and passed and adopted under the suspension of the rules and will become effective following publication of the summary in the newspaper. Excellent. Um, thank you, Brandon, for your creative thinking and uh, creative solutions. Following um, following the approval of the ordinance, I'll now entertain a motion of approval of the resolution reducing the amount of sidewalk fee in lieu of construction and the resulting amendment to the city fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Rule. This will be a roll call vote. Excellent. Um, thank you, Brandon, for your creative thinking and uh, creative solutions. Following um, following the approval of the ordinance, I'll now entertain a motion of approval of the resolution reducing the amount of sidewalk fee in lieu of construction and the resulting amendment to the city fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Rule. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, now moving on to new business, um, uh, Councilman Sh- um, Schreber, uh, there's some members of the public here. Um, do you mind if I put that one, you removed off the consent further down? Is that agreeable to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
I I know there's some people here, here to speak. For the first item under new business, uh, in order to address unforeseen contract changes resulting in the new guaranteed maximum price, staff seeks approval of change order number four and an amendment to the CMGC service agreement with Gino Construction Company for Traverse Park renovation phase one, city agreement number A twenty-three dash five three zero zero dash five. I will now yield the floor to Community Planning and Development Director, Jason Welker.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just gonna pull up the staff report here for you guys. Let's see, that's the playground. Eight A. Gotcha. Okay, uh, we are here before you tonight asking for approval for change order number four with the Gino Construction Agreement. This is for the items you see on the screen here. There are four things included in this change order. Uh, first one is actually a credit towards the project of almost seven thousand dollars. We swapped out glass overhead doors for solid overhead doors after realizing that those doors would be behind curtains that are typical in tennis facilities like this, which separate the walking um, aisle on either side of the building from the plain uh, the court space. So it was determined that we could enjoy some savings from uh, going with those solid panel doors. Um, second is the nine thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars for a con- a two-foot concrete apron, which will surround the asphalt uh, court surface for the entire perimeter of the building. That you you might ask, well, why are we paying more for a concrete apron? In the value engineering process, it was determined that much more than nine thousand dollars would be saved by using an asphalt surface instead of a concrete surface for the courts themselves. So previously, we had switched from the original design from uh, that included concrete to asphalt. Um, that was also determined through our our conversations with the Sandpoint Tennis Association, with the USTA. Uh, asphalt is considered a superior plain surface, so we saved quite a bit of money by switching to asphalt. But the um, oversight was in that asphalt cannot butt up against the foundation, the concrete foundation walls. So engineers determined that a two-foot concrete apron surrounding the asphalt was necessary for the structural integrity of the building. Uh, hence this nine thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollar addition to the change order. The biggest one in here is uh, um, the excavation, the overages in the excavation of the site. These were, this was work that was done last fall, as you know. Um, there was a additional excavation needed beyond what was anticipated when the building was designed. Uh, our excavation contractor s- uh, ended up hauling out thousands of additional yards of fill that needed to be excavated due to the sawdust content on the site. So that added fifty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars to the project. That work is long done. Uh, fortunately, through our um, project manager, Maureen Evans Lauter, um, she was able to negotiate with this change order quite a bit of additional excavation work related to the uh, to the skate park expansion, which begins next month. The same contractor is doing the preliminary excavation for the skate park, so we basically getting some work for free in 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 addition to this addition, um, change order associated with the Russell Building location. Finally, uh, two more additions, um, a drain land, a drain line for the Dreamland project. Um, because Gino's on site and they're doing all all the excavation work and the the drain work for the uh, Russell Building, they're also going to go ahead and do the um, storm drain for the skate park expansion, which as I said, begins later this month. So that's the thirteen thousand dollars. And then the pathway paving, this was at the request of the mayor. This is the gravel path that was installed around the tennis courts, which currently is loosely compacted gravel, I would describe it. Um, we have in- included the paving of that pathway to make it, you know, obviously truly accessible. And in the long run, we we always wanted to pay pathway there. Now we're gonna have that in the short run as well. So that's the final addition to this change order. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director Welker. Are there any questions uh, for Director Welker?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Trevor.
Could you remind me where the funding is coming for the Dreamland Skate Park?
Uh, that's from Parks Capital Improvement Funds, along with about fifty-two thousand dollars contributed by the um, Bonner County Skate Park Association. And I believe the total budget for that's four hundred and two thousand dollars is what we have budgeted for the skate park expansion. Phase one, I think we're calling it. Yeah.
And so it says extend, extend storm drain for Dreamland. Is there a reason why we chose to put it in with this project as opposed to that one?
Um, I, I believe it's because it's the contractors that are doing the work on site already. So we're doing the, for example, included in the original bid package for Russell was, uh, storm drain for, um, the building, which is gonna carry storm water off of the gutters that are, that are already installed on the side of the building. Those are all gonna funnel into a, I'm not an engineer, sorry. If Brandon knows more about this, he's welcome to come up and speak. But the storm water's gonna come off the building through the, um, the, the gutters along the roof down into an underground, um, pipe that goes out to the street into our sewer system. So this work's just gonna be done in conjunction with that. It's all happening at the same time. There's significant cost savings by having it all done at once, rather than bringing in a separate contractor during the, the skate park expansion.
Sure. It was, yeah, it was more of an accounting question.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I could look into that for you and get back to you.
Fair enough.
Any other member, uh, any other councilors have questions?
Is this where we're talking about the, um, request for extra money? Is that part of this one? Because there's two eight As.
Uh, let's look. So eight A and, um,
A and eight A.
Yes, it is. This is the change order request, yeah. The other eight A is just another, uh, packet item related to this. Oh, that's the one I already had open.
Which requests the extra $86,000?
Right.
Out of the parks?
Oh, sorry. Um, we can go into that. So there was, I believe it was this one that talked a little bit about our contingency funds. So let me zoom in here. Okay. So as you know, um, this project was originally estimated to cost around 7.3 million and we had around 200,000 of contingency funds set aside in our original budget. The, the overages we've experienced are pushing the limits of that. But as you also know, when that money was donated to the city, it was invested and we've been realizing about $25,000 a month of of capital gains, of, of interest earnings on that. So that has, as was intended, gone into supporting the project. So far we are not, there's no expectation that we're not gonna be able to finish this, finish this project within the budget allocated in the original budget, plus our original contingency funds. But, um, we did put in this report, an update to let you know that there are capital improvement funds that the mayor has basically, uh, directed us not to spend this year. And these are what those funds were for. So we had in our budget this year from the previous administration, $35,000 for a City Beach Master Plan. Um, that is not going to happen this year. We had $30,000 for design cons, cons, consulting fees for a non-motorized, or sorry, for the boat, boat launch repairs. No, I'm sorry, that was, that I was, I was looking down at, uh, the Sand Creek Non-Motorized Boat Launch, $25,000 for design consulting fees for that, um, dog park design fees. These were all things that we had budgeted this year, which were, A, we don't have the bandwidth for, B, I think the community is not really excited for more, you know, conceptual plans for additional park amenities at this point. So these funds are available in our Parks Capital Improvement Fund, and the only thing they can really be spent on is either design or construction of Parks capital projects. So they are available if we experience further unexpected overages on the, on the, uh, Traverse project. And just to be clear, these are not taxpayer dollars. These are, uh, Parks user fee dollars. These come from primarily mortgage, but $109,000 in the Parks Capital Improvement Fund last year came from the RV park that we run down at City Beach. That's a shockingly profitable venture for the city. Um, and then field usage fees, Memorial Park, the Festival of Sandpoint pays a lot of money to use Memorial Field. So these, these revenues come not from taxpayers, but from park users. And therefore they are required to be reinvested into Parks, Parks Capital Projects, the largest of which is the three different projects going on at Traverse Park right now. Dreamland, uh, Skate Park Expansion, Travers, uh, sorry, the Russell Building and the Playground Expansion Improvement. So.
But because they come from user fees, they can be used for park improvement. Projects improvement. Um, I don't know that anybody has been asked, I guess, if we want to repair that, I kayak. You said we don't need that or some, it, it was said that that's not
That's right.
Not necessary or not something that is needed. Um,
Just to be, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just to be clear, the $25,000 was, was for design.
Two, that's two different things. Thirty thousand for the
Memorial Park?
Is it what you're talking about?
Yeah, so that project, I recollect, is going to be more expensive. We don't have enough money to do it, so we'll pursue grant funding and look at opportunities to uh, bring in other dollars to support that project in future years.
Get the grant.
And also just to point out, we don't plan to use these fees for the Russell Building. But th, th, this is not money that we need to spend at this point. But knowing the, the nature of these big construction projects and that we still have about six or seven months in this one, a little less.
Yeah, and this is, this is for, you know, to prepare us for contingencies. Um, typically in my, in the private sector, when you're, when you're building a house, you're gonna plan at least a 10% contingency, as, um, Director Welker mentioned. This project was brought forward at $7.3 million with a $200,000 contingency. During that time, we've seen incredible inflation in this country. This is a project that's been going on for two years. Um, so I'm amazed and I celebrate, uh, staff's effort to actually get this project as far as they have with the limited budget that they have. So this just gives them a little more cushion. We, we never know what, we don't know until we know it. So, uh, this, this just builds in some extra protection, um, to make sure the project can flow smoothly.
I guess just unfortunately it was presented to us and proposed as a budget neutral project. And now it's brought to us as a need of funds to bring this to completion or for the delay. That's not what was voted on originally.
I, I can tell you that as the CPD department head and the one ultimately responsible for this project, my number one priority is delivering the best possible outcome for the people of Sandpoint. So getting this building right, delivering what we promised is of the utmost importance. And Maeve has done an incredible job as the project manager. Uh, value engineering this, and that was a term I had, I wasn't really familiar with, but it basically means squeezing value out of every dollar we spend on this project.
I didn't realize that. You shared a lot of that, and that's awesome.
Yeah, and it's going to look, I mean, the, for example, you know, one of the easy things to cut would be this, well, it would be terribly hard to be honest, but it's not, it's a nice to have, not a need to have. The beautiful, uh, wood scrim, which by the way, we've, we've had, uh, Idaho Forest Group has offered to donate all the wood for the front of the building. Several thousand dollar donation. They're gonna custom mill it for us and donate it to the project. So that's some, that's one thing that we're doing in-house to try to get every dollar out of this project. We reached out to the manager of the Leclerc Mill and pitched it to them and they, they said, yes, this is something we'd like to support. So that freed up seven or $8,000 that we can put towards some of these other overages. So it's
I guess that's what I would like to see is more of that to
There, there's quite a bit of that. We'd be happy to share a lot of that with you. I'll, I'll give you another example, uh, Councilwoman Ducat, um, on the splash pad in the park next door. The projects kind of get combined. I know they're separate. Um, to operate a splash pad, you have to have clean water. So a very expensive option was to put in a chlorinator and a big, uh, capture tank that would treat filter and then recycle that water through. Um, as an alternative, we started talking about, well, can we use that water and just we're irrigating this area? Can we just run clean water through and use that drainage water as irrigation? Um, and, and cut down our irrigation money? Well, that turned out to be a, a big cost saving because you didn't have to put in the filtration. And it solves an environmental problem, not using as much, or reusing our, our, basically our dirty water.
Part. That's the playground.
Yeah, no, but it's, it's all part of the value engineering that's going on to make this project come across the finish line.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Trevor?
Could, could you explain a little bit more? You said that you're pretty confident that we're not gonna go over budget on this. I, it was my understanding, this is the second time that we've had a, a change order and we're up to, what, almost $400,000 in change orders at this point?
Right.
Which is much more than the contingency we, that we had. I was under the impression that we used up our entire contingency the last change order, so.
You're, you're correct that we've exceeded the original $200,000 contingency, but fortunately we've realized close to over $100,000 in interest earnings on this original investment, actually well over $100,000 in interest earnings. So we're still within the original gift amount when you take into account the interest earnings. And that honestly, Councilman Schreiber, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have had to do that, right? The original intent was for those interest earnings to go into an endowment fund. Which we do have an endowment fund, but to be perfectly honest, given the nature of the inflation we've faced, there's not gonna be as much in that endowment fund when this is all said and done. So.
Is there any money other than the original 25,000 in that endowment fund?
Uh, it's, it's gained about $600 in interest returns since it was formed a couple of months ago.
And if we were to continue to go uh, have change orders that push us over budget, would we have the opportunity to reclaim that endowment?
Um,
It'd probably be a discussion.
We always could, yeah. But it's considering it's $25,000. It's, I think it's the pref, it's, uh, it's up to the council, I should say, if that were ever, if we're ever faced with the need to get that $25,000 out, it could be done. Sure.
Now, it seems like, you know, contingency has one connotation, but it seems like some of these expenses were foreseeable. For example, the excavation of, of wood debris that was noted in a geotechnical uh, report that we had prior to construction. Um, what are the chances that we're gonna see another change order?
Of that size? Highly unlikely. The, what happened there was the the surveyors, geotechnical surveyors drilled five or six bore holes all over the site and determined that five feet was the approximate depth that of excavation that would be needed. And, you know, it's kind of like throwing darts at a board. You, you don't know exactly where you're gonna land and ultimately there was, there were basically what I, what I heard described as like veins of sawdust that were, I mean, this was a mill site. This was a brick yard at one point just west is a dump. And they found veins of sawdust that as they started to dig, they ultimately just had to dig the whole site out by three additional feet. It, it became this mess of excavation. So foreseeable, not based on the geotechnical studies that were done initially. I mean, a surprise? Not really. I, I guess there's a difference, right? Like, are we surprised that additional excavation was needed on the side of a former mill and brickyard? No, but the data did not show that that would be necessary when it was initially collected.
So I guess the, the last question there is, what are, what are the expectations that we're gonna be having the same conversation a third time?
What are the, what are the knowns and what are the unknowns and what are the known unknowns?
Right.
I mean, I think, I, yeah, the, fortunately, the building is nearly done, as you can tell. So there's probably fewer unknowns going forward because the, the heavy excavation work is long done. The, the building, uh, Legacy Building Solutions is going to be out of here within two weeks. Like, they're almost done with the building. The interior, I mean, I think asphalt work, I don't think there's gonna be any major surprises since it's going on a pre-compacted gravel bed. You know, with the, the asphalt quote should come in. There's some, uh, and you, you know, the architectural design of the interior, that's all known. The costs of the, the studs that are gonna go into the walls are all known, like, uh, that we're not gonna see overages of $60,000. I wouldn't anticipate, um, because we're quite close to the finish line at this point.
But it would do.
That was perfect.
Yeah.
I have one more question. If, if, are you finished with your?
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilwoman Ducat?
Please. Um, we also, there was a shared promise of thirty trees picnic shelter restored, et cetera. Are those budgeted for in this still?
Yep. Those have not been cut from the budget. Um, we are, in our value engineering efforts, we're, we're reaching out. The mayor presented a pitch to the Rotary Club last week, the idea that the Rotary Club might help us pay for the re-insulation of the Rotary Shelter, which by the way, is about a $17,000 addition to this project. So how did we get so close to our max so quickly? Because the original donation was, didn't include $17,000 for basically rebuilding, uh, thirty, it's thirty years old this year, 1994 it was, it was installed. But when we, when that was removed, if you've been over there and had a look, they're literally rotting timbers. So there, there's quite a lot of costs associated with repurposing that picnic shelter. We have, and I plan to follow up with my contacts at Rotary to see if the Rotary Club is interested in helping with that. If they were, it would help us achieve this project within budget. But that's $17,000 that was not intended to be part of this project, uh, to, to put that picnic shelter back, back in place.
But it was, I felt.
Councilman Dick, if you know anybody at the Rotary Club?
Certainly I do.
It, can I make my, one more comment or ask a question? I sent you a picture.
Yeah.
And I didn't get response, so I
Yeah.
just like to know.
Yeah, you sent a picture. I, I got that late in the afternoon and it appears to be a
And I did call you earlier.
Might have been a rip in the fabric. Um, I did get to visit with Jason and Maeve. Um, that is a intentional cut for, uh, conduit and related.
And that's, that's what I wanted clarification of so that I share that because the community is saying it's ripped already. And I went and looked at it myself and it's got that
Yep.
plate hanging and that's was my question. Is it a rip? Or can the public be convinced that it's not tearing already? That's something on purpose.
So I, I forgot to mention in my update for you earlier that just last week, three of us were, um, invited by Legacy Building Solutions to go visit their factory and visit several of the sports facilities that they've built near and around Minneapolis, where they're headquartered outside Minneapolis. And we visited the factory where these buildings are literally fabricated from steel that came right out of the mill in Pittsburgh and trucked to Minnesota. And they, 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 ironically, I can't think of any other factory that manu, so the buildings in which this factory operate are legacy building structures. So they built their factory out of what they're building in the factory, which is pretty cool. I don't know if there's other examples of that. Um, and there's about, so their factories, their factory is made up of about four buildings similar to ours, just longer and a lot taller. Um, and then within those buildings, they actually manufacture the buildings. So they fabricate the steel, um, beams that hold the thing up. They, they have giant rolls of PVC, uh, fabric, which they cut hundreds of different colors based on whatever their clients desire. Um, and I had learned about something called welding, uh, not welding, everyone knows what welding is, but PVC welding. So that, the, the fabrics, the fabric are welded to each other. So the sidewalls are, uh, and they use basically like a heat gun. Uh, it's a PVC welder. So you'd think, well, how do these giant panels attach to each other? They're actually welded together. And one of the benefits of these structures is that they're very easy to maintain. Uh, they're also very durable. So I, they said, well, you can walk on the roof of these things and like pressure wash the roof. And like, you can walk on the roof of a fabric structure? Yes, you can. Um, they had, we visited a baseball training facility where baseball teams train. Don't these balls like puncture the walls? No, you can hit baseballs at the walls of these things and not damage them. They're very tough and resistant, but if they do ever tear, the only cases in which they tear is generally through intentional vandalism. Somebody took a machete or a large knife to the side, they could puncture the wall and tear it. But it's not the end of the world because this fabric can be welded back together. So actually, right now, our Parks Maintenance Team, um, Sean Warren, who went to Minneapolis with, uh, myself and Maeve, um, he's determining what welding equipment the city needs to buy in order to repair these structures. In fact, entire panels from the side can be removed and replaced within a day to a day and a half. But in, in the case that that would happen, Legacy would come out and do that replacement for us. The, the exterior material has a 25-year warranty. So if there are tears or, you know, if the, if there's a manufacturer failure, it's taken care of by Legacy. And after 25 years, the entire structure's skin can be replaced at a fraction of the cost of the structure. So these buildings are meant to last for decades and they can be replaced, the, the material can be replaced, you know, thirty, forty years from now. So the, the steel is, is permanent. That steel's not going anywhere. So to call it a tent is a bit, you know, I, I guess I do have a tent that I used in college, but it's got a lot of tears in it because if I just touch it wrong, it seems to tear. But this building's quite resilient. And it can be walked on. That's what kind of shocked me is you can walk on the roof of that building.
Well, thanks, because that answers, um, what you learned. I was gonna ask you what you learned there.
Oh, and I, yeah, I visited, um, actually, I did take notes, but I left them back there. Um, tennis center, similar to ours. Uh, football training complex, soccer training comp, complex, an entire indoor Olympic-sized track and field complex, a wrestling building and an indoor basketball center, all, all made out of these structures, all within like 60 miles of Minneapolis.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, obviously it's a Minnesota company, so they build probably more, but this company builds over 150 of these structures a year around the country. So it's quite impressive.
Thank you, um, Director Welker. Super informative. Um, any other questions or counsel on this item? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution of change order number four, amending the GM, CMGC Service Agreement with Gino Construction Company for Traverse Park Renovation Phase One, city agreement A twenty-three dash fifty-three zero zero five.
So moved.
A roll call vote.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do have somebody online who's raised a question.
Oh, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
Voting for the $86,000. I'm confused.
One moment, please.
One moment, please.
The change.
Rebecca Holland?
Hi Rebecca, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, I feel that the commitment made. To fund the Russell Building exclusively with Russell family donations should not be deserted tonight. Because city staff's request to tap into the capital improvement funds earmarked for other rec projects. The community was told that no, no other funds besides the seven point five million and interest would be used for the Russell Complex. To build the shelter, replace the shelter, the walking path and replace thirty park trees that were lost. So to ask tonight to move other park money for contingency fund and a cushion. It just doesn't seem right. This fifty eight thousand dollars for extra excavation is a large amount. And it's due to the mistake of it putting that building on a landfill because they knew there was buried wood debris. The geotech testing showed that, advanced testing. And I've gone through the city online checkbook and have calculated over three million dollars so far spent on architectural design, engineering. The maintenance plan consultants, the this excavation and the structural building so far. That leaves three and a half million for all the things like electric, plumbing, heating, framing. Flooring fixtures, cabinets, and on it goes, plus the trees and the shelter and the walking path. And it needs to stay within this seven point five. If people reduce features all the time. They need to modify, then stay within that plan. I don't think the community would be very happy to know that. Funds that were set aside to look into something is, you know, they've really wanted like a dog park is. Is getting moved over to the Russell Building. It's just not gonna go over well. Um, and perhaps if, you know, rethinking it, stay within the funds, get her done. You know, there may be some things to modify. The first thing I think of is all the concrete plaza they wanna pour around it. I think the community would much prefer it to be green grass and um hot picnic benches. And let, you know, a natural grassy play area that Travis Park was intended to be. Um. You know, you gotta cover the cost. The excavation was done. It went on for a long, long time and that's, there was the, there's the money. But tapping, but adding the CIP funds to this is the big hiccup. That I really, really wanna ask you to eliminate that and just. And direct your staff to stay within the budget of seven point five plus interest, et cetera. So thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Rebecca, appreciate it. Um, there was a question from Councilwoman Duquette, just to clarify what we're voting on here. Um, did you wanna ask that question, Councilwoman Duquette?
I I think I think I understand. It is the current change order for eighty six thousand seven hundred and three dollars and fifteen cents. To come from the CIP.
Correct.
Okay.
Mister Mayor, uh, it's it's coming from the.
Oh, no, sorry, no, just to be clear, that's not coming. That's just, that's still within the budget. We're not directing any funds from other capital improvement projects. At at this time, nor do we hope to.
The Park CIP.
Yeah, we're not using those funds. We're still within the budget. We're, see what I'm saying? We're we're tapping into the contingency funds that were originally allocated towards the Russell Building. Uh, we're not taking any of these other funds. We put that in the report just to show you what we still have in the Parks Capital Improvement Budget. But at this time, we're not using any of those funds for this project. Do you understand? So we are, we are still funding the the Russell Building from the Russell donation and from the interest earned on the Russell donation. There's, there's no use of other funds at this time. So these, these, these items, um.
The dog.
The dog, the dog park, the Memorial Park boat, those are not being used for the Russell Building.
At this time.
Yeah.
It's to rebuild and preserve a contingency in case there's other unknowns, which we've heard that there's. Very unlikely to be any other unknowns.
Mister Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Trevor.
If we were to dip into those contingency funds from the Park CIP, would. That come back before council again?
Um, that's more of a fine grain detail of um. Coming down to the mayor's ability to expend budgeted dollars in the budget and um the mayor has the ability to. Um, uh, execute work up to seventy five thousand dollars without council approval, if it's in the budget. Um. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, or anyone else. Um. I I certainly would update you if if anything was gonna be spent out of those, provide you an update, but um. It's all in the budget right now, uh, to some degree, to the mayor's discretion. We operate on a. Budgeting process where it's the bottom line, where the council approves the budget, there's. Um. Bullet pointed um direction of what that budget's gonna fund, but at the end of the day, the mayor has some discretion to move. Dollars around in the budget as long as we don't exceed our budget authority.
So what you're saying is that we're not approving use of Park CIP funds right now because you could do it without our approval?
Uh, this, this was a pretty um, um, I was trying to be as transparent as possible. To to show you how this all added up and what funds are available to ensure that this project can be completed as presented.
Our park, our user fees being asked to spend on the Russell.
Uh, these fees right now are, we were being transparent to show that these are being. Buffering the contingency going forward.
And they could have been used for something else.
They could, they can.
It could still be.
How can they still be if you're?
It's only May first, there's still several months left in the fiscal year and we have other projects that we'd like to pursue as well. Trust me, no one wants a non-motorized boat launch it.
But if you take eighty six thousand away from a hundred and fifteen thousand, that doesn't leave much.
No, the eighty six thousand is coming from the the Russell donation. We're, 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 we're getting a change order approved because we need to get change orders approved because we're, we've exceeded the original. Maximum amount estimated by Gino Construction. So as, as the. Body that pays Gino Construction, we need to inform you that we've exceeded the original maximum amount due to unforeseen overages. Okay, that's what the change order is about, but it's not coming to you saying, we're out of money, we need to take money from other projects. We still have money in the budget. And we still expect to complete the project within the seven point five million dollar budget plus the interest that's been earned on the donation.
So then why did you, I, I, why was I understanding that user fees were being used for this?
Probably because it was in the staff report showing that we have additional contingencies should we get to a point, but the, the. The goal, obviously, of the, the team, the project team, this is what value engineering is all about. Um, Ms. Holland referenced the, the size of the concrete pad. Trust me, it's already been significantly reduced. Significantly reduced to save money. Yeah, so we're, every, every day Maeve is finding ways to save money on this project. And so are her engineers and her, her architects. So that's, that's the way we're. Uh, while, again, I'm probably the one pushing the hardest right now because I'm saying there are non-negotiables. We have to have the wood scrim on the front. We have to have the thirty mature shade trees planted around the side of the building. Those are things that could be cut, but. We wanna deliver what was promised. So we are cutting things like we're shrinking the concrete plaza in the front. Those are the things that have been cut. We found out that a, a, uh, an electric water heater was more than adequate for the four sinks. That will have in this building, two bathrooms outside, two bathrooms inside. Whereas the original quote was for a commercial industrial water heater that was gonna be about twenty five thousand dollars. We found out that. A seven thousand dollar water heater was perfectly adequate because despite the size of the building, there are only four sinks in the restrooms. So those are the kind of things that.
And they, they came before us before, I remember.
Those are the kind of things that we're cutting right now because when you build a forty thousand square foot building, there's a lot of costs associated, but. But Maeve is a wizard at finding ways to cut those costs.
And and I would add two more things. I mean, these, the staff, the, these aren't fun conversations with the contractors. I mean, the, they are. Pushing um these people um very hard and uh it's, it's not always pleasant. Um, and and then the second thing I would want to um bring up to Councilman Trevor's point. Although I have the budget authority, a change order as um Director um Welker pointed out would need to come to council and say, well, we're exceeding. We're gonna go into the contingencies now, but there's general flexibility in the budget for the mayor to address priorities.
And of course, you, 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 you're aware of how interest works. So as we pay bills to Gino, the amount of of principal that we have in our investment is shrinking. So our interest earnings are going to continue to decrease since we're paying bills along the way. So whereas the original donation of seven point five million gains a couple hundred thousand in interest over the last couple of years. Our current balance is significantly lower, so we are just preparing council, full transparency, right? There's tough decisions are being made every day on this project, but our goal is to to deliver it as as envisioned.
Okay, my goal is to not vote against what the community has been told that. There will be no other expenditures besides from that seven and a half million and the interest. That there was, that was, as I understood it, the promise to the community. Nothing else will pay for that. Is that what I am voting for or against right now?
Uh, voting to support this change order would not violate that, that desire of yours.
It does not violate. You understand that is that?
Yes.
You understand that is that?
Yes.
Okay. Is this me that's?
No, I think you're confused because they put the waves, the other information in there and it, in an attempt to be transparent. But I think if you just look at the change order and realize it's within the Russell budget money that was given, that's really all we're voting on.
Okay, well, I, I guess I don't understand why they talk about user fees taken and. Okay.
Good. Um, I had heard a, a motion by Councilwoman Rule, Council President Rule, and second by Dick. Um, do we need to remove, uh, make new motions? We get away from that. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution for change order number four, amending the.
Still on the table. Question to your, in answer to your question, um, there is a motion in a second, so we're good. We're ready for a vote if council is done discussing.
It'll be a roll call vote.
Councilor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councilor Rule?
Yes.
Councilor Dick?
Yes.
Councilor Sprow?
Jason, thank you for being very clear, yes.
Councilor Ducat?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, next item eight B, um.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
My apologies, but could we take a quick break, please?
Sure, uh, that'll be a, about a five minute break. Thank you for your patience. Reconvening at seven forty one. Next, staff seeks permission to solicit bids. This is item eight B. Solicit, solicit bids for construction of the new ADA accessible inclusive playground and splash pad at Travis Park. I will again yield the floor to Jason.
Okay, thank you. This is, uh, I think the most exciting project going on this summer. Although I'm gonna say the same thing about the skate park expansion when that happens as well. Uh, the playground that Maeve and her team at the Mike, at Mike. You, you guys, you've met Mike Terrell several times, the lead landscape architect on this project. They've been working tirelessly on this playground. Project, um, back in January, council approved uh the purchase of equipment. We have since ordered the equipment. You can see here, I'll just pull up a, a quick, um, some pictures to show you. These are the, these are not the colors we've ordered, but these are, and by the way, this, each of these are designed for inclusive play. We've got. Um, descriptions on this, on these particular slides of the, the different skill sets that these. Uh, pieces of play equipment are designed to support and facilitate. So we've got, I'm just gonna scroll, scroll through them here. Um, the color scheme was determined in collaboration with Heather Upton, our Arts Culture Historic Preservation Officer. We're going with the green and blue theme to match our city's um color scheme, the, the city's logo and branding. And obviously, the uh Russell Building's got some blue accents as well. So I'll just pause on this one really quick. This is the, the toddler playset. We've got two playsets going in at the new playground. Um, the toddler playset you can see here and the Volo is the full size. There's twenty two different routes on this, on this playset. And it's got little uh, little route maps as well, so kids can preview what route they wanna take through the course. This is gonna be kind of our, our large anchor playset at the new playground. We've also ordered the WeGo round. You know, we have custom um art panels from a local artist. That are being included on that. And this one's really cool. Um, the number one, well, trampoline was the number one request. In our outreach efforts with about three hundred kids last fall from the community. Um, in fact, the. The Volo does include the sender net feature, which is kinda like a trampoline. Um, turns out trampolines themselves are not really advised in public parks, but features that have trampoline type. Um, the elements to them are, was something we were able to incorporate. Um, the zip line was the. Close to the most requested uh feature for our playground and we are ordering this, this piece that you see here. We have already ordered this piece that you see here. It's got two um, two zip line courses. There's one with the seat which can be used for small children or children with disabilities. Wheelchair bound children can be put in the seated position and then the center one is kind of like the disc you're used to at a, a zip line. Um, it just so happened on our tour of legacy uh buildings in Minnesota, we came across a playground full of. Um, equipment from the same manufacturer and we were all able to sample the Zip Cruise assisted. Um, why didn't use the assisted one, but we were all able to sample the Zip Cruise zip line system. So we are really excited to have that one. Um, I'll go back to the agenda item. Um, and you, you, I, I hope you all had a chance to, to click through some of these. And uh have a look at them as well. There's some actually really cool videos of kids playing on these equipments uh on the website for this company. So what are we asking for today? Well, we're ready to go out to bid for this um construction. So we've ordered the equipment that was. Two hundred thousand dollars, give or take. Uh, the total project budget is around one point one, two or so. Um, half of that coming from the Land Water Conservation Fund grant. Um, we're not ready to go out and hire a contractor to actually build the playground for us. The, the location of the playground, you know where it is. It's right now, it's, it's building supplies and dirt and the, and the Rotary Pavilion is kind of on stilts right now, waiting to be reinstalled in the playground. So we're gonna find a contractor. I think our pre-bid meeting is Friday morning, should you approve this tonight? And we hope to have a contractor signed on by the middle of May and we hope that they're breaking ground on the playground sometime in June. Um, the, the packet went into a lot of detail. You saw. You know, more pictures of the types of structures where. We've already ordered, uh, the layout of the playground is very clear in this document, where the different items are gonna be, how existing trees are gonna be incorporated in the playground. Where the splash pad's going to go. Oh, also splash pad equipment is included in this bid, so is surfacing, so it's not just the dirt work. We're also, um. We're soliciting bids for the different surface options that we have. Um, plague, uh, splash pad features are included along with all the electrical, all the plumbing. We gotta get the water to the splash pad. So this is a, a big construction project, but it's definitely gonna be the biggest and best playground with the first ever splash pad. In Sandpoint. So, uh, yeah, that's what we're putting out to bid this week. Um, within here, you guys had the chance to look at all the final. Um, architectural renderings, these will be given to whichever contractor we end up choosing and they will build this for us. And there's gonna be a lot of um interested contractors cuz these sorts of city playground projects are, are, are really exciting. Okay, does anybody have any questions about?
Mister Mayor?
Uh, bid package.
Thank you, Jason. Um, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah.
Could you explain a little bit, when things are noted as alternate?
Okay.
What exactly does that mean?
That's another term that I've had to learn. Additional alternatives are things that were, we want them to include in their bids. Um, but there's like the base bid and then there's what we call additional alternatives. There's the must haves and then there's the nice to haves. So assuming we got four or five bids for this, um, i- if we had a, a bid come in that included the additional alternatives. Whereas another one didn't, but it was within our budget, we definitely go with the one that could do those additional alternatives as well. So I, I'd call those like the nice to have things. And we've also, by the way, we've still got some grants outstanding, um. Uh, Maeve and I submitted a Equinox Grant just two weeks ago that we hope to put towards one of these additional alternative items. The rock play structure that you saw with the ropes on it, it was shown in here as an additional alternative. Um, that's a nice to have. It wasn't in the original playground design, but I looked at that open space on the north side of the playground and I said, we need some like rock feature there. So we've, at my request, we've added a couple additional alternatives to this project as well. And I wanna see if these contractors can, can include them in their bids and if, if they can, then they're more likely to, to get the contract. Um, additionally, we, when we find out whether we get these grants, we could include those additional alternatives as well. Yeah.
Thanks.
Any members of the council have any other questions?
I do.
I do too, so go ahead. Sorry, go.
Uh, Councilman Trevor?
Okay. Um, so will any of the old equipment be incorporated?
Uh, we're not planning on it at this point. The, the swing sets are already planning to be reinstalled at City Beach. We haven't had swing sets at City Beach. So Austin, our, uh, Parks Maintenance Coordinator is making a plan to reinstall the swing sets from the old playground. But no, the, most of the play equipment was beyond its usable life and the stuff we're getting is quite nice.
Swing sets were something that specifically jumped out at me. It seems to me that two bays aren't enough. Um, I also noted that, you know, when I first saw that rock feature with the ropes, I thought, oh, that's really cool. And then I realized that there's a boulder wall right behind it. So is it, would it be possible to swap that out for additional?
So the, you're talking about where the roller slide is? That boulder wall? So that's only four feet high. That roller slide is like an accessible slide. There will be a, an ADA accessible path up to the top of that hill. So if you think about like, what's a bouldering or a climbing feature, those, the boulders on either side of that slider, they're like this high off the ground. There, it's, it's a very small. You know, I know it looks like a big hill, but it's a, it's a very small little hill. So the, the, the climbing boulder feature, which is an additional alternative, this is just one option here. There's actually several in the catalog that are pretty awesome. Also, this company, uh, can do custom molds from, uh, for any mountain you want. So we've talked about possibly having a mold of chimney rock made, which is a local iconic mountain in the Selkirk's and actually having a little mini version of chimney rock at the, at the Travers Playground. So that there, they can do that for almost no additional cost, which is pretty cool. So.
So how tall is this? It's really hard to tell from the picture.
I'd have to go to the website. It's, I, I, you know, I think there's probably a link to it in the council packet, but the, the website for this, this, um, particular company that makes these rock bouldering structures has literally all the specs and they have little diagrams showing the height of like an adult and a child next to it. So I want to say this one's probably six and a half, seven feet tall.
Okay.
Like an adult is about at eye level with, or I guess I'm a six and a half foot tall adult. So I'm at eye level with this, with the structure. Yeah, it's not tiny.
Okay. Yeah, no, the, I did look through the links in that packet and it did seem like it probably wasn't much more than four feet. So I wasn't. Um, it didn't seem like it was entirely necessary. Is there, it does look like there's extra room between the two base swings and the boulder. I, you know, I just, the only comments I had to go off of are the ones from the survey back in December and I saw that come up several times. And, you know, I don't think that we need more. I, I really like the two swings that are included. But, you know, perhaps we could get some, just some normal swings in addition to those two.
Um, so here's the, uh, ID sculpture, which makes these rock, natural rock features. And you can kind of see what I mean about the height. Here's, here's an example of one down here. I don't know if, by the way, the one that's in here was just one that the architect pulled off the webpage and plopped in there. That's not the one that we're planning to order. There's, um, there's some others that I actually liked quite a bit more than those. So, um, oh yeah, the, the Via Ferrata is the line that we were looking at. So these are different. There's, there's the one that he pulled off the website there.
A new swing costs about twenty thousand dollars ish these days. Um, I love swings. There was a great Bloomberg article the other day about a town in Pennsylvania that put a sixteen swing, sw- swing setup. And it's the hit of the town. I'm, I'm a hundred percent supportive to working with you in the next couple of years to find places to put swings in our city.
Well, it seems like we have swings that they're just going to City Beach instead of going here. Why aren't they going here?
Because we don't have swings in City Beach. And we will have swings here. So. Are you, so you're, you're, you're saying, why aren't we putting more swings and, and why don't we scratch the boulder structure?
It seems like there's space for both, but the boulder structure was alternate anyway.
Mm-hmm. Actually, so I, I wanted to point out some of the Via Ferrata structures that they, that they have, like, my goal is to have one like this. It takes up a lot more space with some more challenging features between them. And these range in price from about twenty thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars for, for, for these particular rock features installed.
Council members, I, I've been noticing some parents with some young kids here who have been incredibly patient. Um, if you don't object, I'd love to just take some public comment and then come back to council comments because I know what it's like having kids for two hours in a meeting. So, um, are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this item?
One moment, Mister Mayor.
Thank you for your patience. Your children are very well behaved.
Natalie Larson?
Hi Natalie and family.
Hello. Hi Mayor. Hi Councilmen and Women. Um, I'm Natalie Larson and this is James Larson and George Larson. And we're here, um, in support of Travers Park and moving that forward in any possible because we miss our park. We live just a few blocks away. Um, we absolutely love going there. I have two very active kids who love to get their energy out. I've seen the plans and we're just really, really excited about it. And, um, highly support it. And I know James is really stoked about the zip line. George is going to love the splash pad. I love that there's fencing between the playground and the parking lot. Um, and I also love that there's bathrooms so close by that are going to be new and improved. So, um, I can see the thought and care that went into all of the elements here. Um, and I'm really excited. I sent you guys all an email this week too, in voicing support of it. So, um, we'll probably zoom in next time.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come out. Good job at your first city council meeting. We can't wait to open this park.
I really like your jacket, James. It's a cool jacket.
Elizabeth Morris?
Well, Miss Morris.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, Councilors. Um, I'm seconding a lot of what Natalie had said. I was not brave enough to bring my children here tonight. They're home with my husband, but I am the mother of a six-year-old little boy and four-year-old twin daughters who used to love going to Travers Park. It's, we live very close by and it was one of our favorite places to go and play. Needless to say, they were very disappointed when the playground was removed. However, this new playground that's being proposed is very exciting for our family. And I promised a lot of my mom friends that I would also represent their voices. It's a big need in our community, especially in the surrounding neighborhoods to the park where we already feel in our very lovely and special town, there's some limitations for parents with young children. This would open that back up for us to have a place to go where the kids can play outside. We can be, you know, in community with each other and, you know, not have to shell out tons of money taking them down to Courtney or Spokane. So I am very excited. I'd love to lend a hand in any capacity as well as, um, a number of other of my mom friends who've reached out wanting to volunteer in any capacity that's needed. So thank you for your time and we hope that this goes forward.
Thank you, Miss Morris. We appreciate it.
Rebecca Holland?
Hi Rebecca, can you hear us?
Council. Uh, you know, I have quite a passion for this playground. And regarding these new plans, um, there's a lot of fun gear, that's for sure. And I'd like to say it's nice that the architects and the planners accepted, um, a good number of the public's input from the survey. Um, but there's the issue of the fact that there's not going to be anything for these children to play on until next year. Um, this is May and the park is being used regularly for games. There's just a narrow area. Um, it was promised that that, uh, you know, at least the swing set would be put there at the far north end. I thought that was what was really agreed to. And it's really disappointing to hear that, you know, it's been a long time since there were swings at City Beach. Um, not that it wouldn't be a great thing for the next, um, park advisory committee, um, to, to, you know, take on as a starter project. And sure, you know, uh, seeing that there's CIP funds or whatever. But this is taking it away from the neighborhood and it just seems so sad to me that that continues just to be delayed. And another concern I have in looking at the plans is it's a little hard to tell the distance of the playground from the fencing for the ball field. And right now, like I said, there's a lot of people coming for games and they come with their chairs and their ground cloths and all that kind of stuff and playroom for other kids to play behind them. And I just don't know what kind of distance there is. It seems, um, that's, that's, that's a concern. Um, but I would, I would just wish that you would at least put something up for the kids. Right now, it's been said numerous times that was going to happen and it's just this delay and this gameplay that's going on. That's just, it's, um, it's, it's wearing. And I don't think it's fair to the community there in that section of town. So, um, thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you, Miss Holland. Um, I assure you they're trying to get this built as quickly as humanly possible. In fact, I believe they're working on the bids upstairs right now.
Mister Mayor, I don't believe anyone else wishes to speak on this topic.
Great. Let's, uh, jump back to council questions. Thanks for letting the public go.
Anybody else besides me?
I just had one comment for Jason, the, um, last woman who spoke.
Mm-hmm.
I talked to her during the break. She is an OT, um, so that's an occupational therapist. Um, she may be interested in our ADA committee. So if you make sure you have her name from Melissa, because they both said they really wanted to get involved.
Cool. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me?
Thank you.
Are there more council questions?
Yes, I would like to say a couple of things. I will be brief. I won't belabor. I do understand this one. If, there are no swings for big kids. All those three swings are awesome. It says for all ages. They're not for big kids. Big kids like the swings also, which is a lot of the comment of the community that they wish those red swings had been put or the red and yellow back out there. Because there isn't anything for the older kids. And I read a whole article about the benefits of swinging for all sorts of ages. Um, it also says that splash pad is for all ages. It's not really. It's for little kids. Um, let me see, the surfacing, artificial turf is in here as an alternative. Terrell, we were told that the community mostly complained or voiced their opinion, their displeasure with artificial turf. He at that time said, because of that, there would be no artificial turf. It says in here, the surfacing either poured in place or artificial turf. I think that should be removed before as that was his promise to the community because that was a big complaint. I've looked up that. It's pretty nasty stuff. It can heat up seventy to a hundred degrees more than any other surface and, um, it's toxic. People don't want it. And I believe we were told that would not be part of it. And now I see it as an alternative. I don't know if we can or how that, I don't know how that would be taken out of there. Um, if it can be, I think it should be. Um, grass, people love grass. The kids love grass. They love mud. I know the grass goes away and it turns to dirt. There's nothing wrong with that. Um, I just want to make sure that the public realizes last time I was told there were other parks available for the kids to play on. There are none. I called all those places, Sam Point Junior Academy and the Little Lambs and Waldorf and they, they do not, they do not want to advertise that their parks are for kids to play. We do need something there now. It is, a lot of the emails we've been getting have asked for some of the old equipment to be back there. They, they love this. This is a great, this is going to be an awesome park. You're right. Um, but it's just right now they don't have anything. And I don't see, again, I'm, I'm with Kyle or Councilman Schreiber about the swings, you know, give up, maybe scrap something else like, I'm not, I'm not a splash pad enthusiast because there, you can't use it in the winter. It's not for big kids. Um, it's slippery. I think the maintenance is going to be an issue. However, if there's something else that could be, um, eliminated or changed so that we could have swings, I think that would be great also. And, and please no artificial turf.
Okay. If you don't mind me, uh, responding to the artificial, artificial, artificial turf versus, uh, poured in place, safety surfacing versus grass. First, uh, versus, there's actually a third surface that we're looking at for this, um, park as well. And that is the engineered, um, wood fiber mulch basically. Um, in fact, we are looking to use engineered wood fiber mulch in the, what we're calling the nature play area in the north part where the rock features are and where the slide finishes. Of course, that will be surrounded by the accessible pathway. So that will be the only part of the playground that's not ADA accessible. And that's, that's what it comes down to is accessibility. Natural grass is not an accessible play surface. The poured in place is and the artificial turf is. It turns out the poured in place is, has the potential to be even more toxic. The other problems with poured in place are that it's quite a bit more expensive to both install and maintain. Um, the playground I visited in, in Minneapolis, just coincidentally, because it was right next to one of the, similar to our project, right next to one of the, um, legacy buildings we went to, had a poured in place surface and there were several places where there are like divots that had come out where who knows what had caused it. Someone had maybe intentionally hit it with something. I, I don't really know what could cause a divot to come out, but there are two or three divots. When that happens, the manufacturer has to come to town and pour a new surface in. When a, when a turf, when turf experiences damage, we have a gigantic turf field in Sandpoint that's entirely maintained by Sandpoint Parks Maintenance Crews. So this is something that we can maintain ourselves. This is also a very different kind of, it's a different turf than what we have at Memorial Field. This is a play surface that's accessible and the fill that goes into it is actually sand. So there is, it's been concerned about like rubber, crushed rubber, old tires. Cork is what we have in Memorial Field despite people thinking it's, it's old rubber. It's actually a cork product, so it's natural, but this one would have a sand fill inside of it. So this, this is the most likely outcome is the, is the artificial turf, um, because it's cheaper to install. We can maintain it ourselves and it's less toxic um, than the poured in place surfacing. So we are expecting to go with the artificial turf and you'll see kind of the turf plan here. There's three different colors. This is kind of a sand colored turf down in the, in the entry area. Um, do you want to guess why there's a blue ribbon going through here?
Splash pad.
Yeah, this is the, this is kind of, um, it, it represents the the outflow. There's not actually water flowing through here. It's blue colored turf, but the, the water will be contained within the splash pad area. So it's to stick with kind of a theme of, of a, a river flowing through a green space with a, a beach area over here. So we are most likely to get turf. We're entertaining offers because poured in place, I agree, De, um, Pam, sorry, I agree that poured in place has, when I walk on poured in place surfaces, I like it. It feels really good. It's like you want to take your shoes off and bounce around on it. It feels kind of bouncy. But this turf surface is the same way. It, it feels really good. It's fun and bouncy. It's low maintenance. And it's, it's accessible. That's the most important thing. A grass surface here is, it would defeat the entire purpose of an accessible playground to put grass here. And, uh, compared to the poured in place, the turf is the preferred, um, surface from the city standpoint because of cost and maintenance ability. And the fact that it's, it's less likely to need expensive repairs from out of town. And it is known to be less carcinogenic than the poured in place surface.
As I read, the poured in place, if it's natural rubber is the best because that's a plant. It's plant-based. It's, it is expensive. If it's not, it's ground up tires is toxic for sure. And so for the wheelchair access, can it be asphalt? That's cheaper than anything, isn't it? I, the community asked for no artificial turf. And, and that was stated again by the architect. I'm just sharing the community's wishes. And I think, I don't know.
I don't think an asphalt surface is ideal for
Well, I'm just saying for the part.
For, for heat or
For part of it, for
For water.
For chair mobility.
It will be surrounded by the asphalt path. The path, the asphalt path surrounds the entire playground. The, over here, this is actually a, a twenty-foot fire lane. So a fire truck can drive all the way around this side. The, the the path that you see here is actually a continuation of the existing path that leaves the two softball fields. And then we're going to continue that path north to the
Okay.
little hill. But so there's a lot of asphalt around this. And by the way, you can see existing And by the way, you can see existing trees, these are existing trees in the park as well. So and then all the trees that we're planting for the Russell Building are going to be on this side of the the path. So um, we 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 are entertaining bids for various surfaces. But just to prepare you, the artificial turf is the preferred surface from the the park designer's standpoint.
I think the community needs to be prepared for that. Then I know that it's going to be one of those things where you want to hurry up in order. Um, is there a way that the public can see now what's the plans are after they?
Hopefully around May thirteenth, when the bids come in, we'll see what would they include.
And the next next step will be to award.
Yeah.
Okay, so the bids come in and then there's an option again to say not accept the bid? Or because then it's too late again? That's that's what happens. A plan is made, then the public is is invited to come view it. But they just get to say whether they like it or not, but they, that there's no input in there. That's that's what frustrates the community. I am community, it is frustrating when the plan is.
Uh, Councilman Sprow.
Yeah, we have, we could have had a bunch of public input tonight. This was posted online. We had mothers come in with children who actually will play on this. And we could have the whole house packed tonight with a bunch of comments and we got what we got.
There was a survey, however, that.
And I think I think it's important to note that the survey that they did not want AstroTurf was the whole part to be AstroTurf. This is a small portion for a specific part of a playground that works usually best with artificial turf. And it's not, the survey was talking about all the softball field, uh, baseball field, soccer fields, all being AstroTurf. Absolutely agree, the overwhelming opinion was, yeah, they don't want the whole Travis Park to be AstroTurf. But I think it's important to note that this is a small portion for a specific function of the park. It's not the whole park. So I don't I don't think it's, I don't think that is the case that the community is going to be in uproar because a splash pad was going to be inclusive and uh mainly for water. So I think that's important to just to distinguish between the whole park being AstroTurf and this specific part being AstroTurf. And to to a splash pad, I I disagree completely that it's not for big kids. I play with my kids on the one downtown with the splash pad that's just straight concrete. And kids play there all the time in the summer. I play with my kids, so it's not just for small kids. It can be for all ages, especially parents that will be with their kids on the splash pad. So I personally respectfully disagree that it's just for small kids. It can be very well for big kids too, or older kids that are watching their young siblings walking them through the park. So I disagree with that as well. But I do agree with, I'd like to see more swings there, I think that's very important. Um, if it's just going to slow the whole process down, uh, then I'd rather take what we have now and move forward because that's what we want. But I think in the future, I think I I agree with the um Councilwoman DeKet and Council Schreiber that we, seeing more swings there would be, would be great. Kids love swings, so I do agree with that. But those are just my two cents.
Director Walker, the budget this year swings.
Okay.
Um, I want to pull it back to in the form of a question, I appreciate the discussion. But um, do council members have any questions?
I, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
One of the recurring themes I saw when looking through these survey comments was um shady places for uh parents to sit while they're watching their kids, was that incorporated into the design?
Yeah, there are uh, and I'd have to zoom in, I'm sorry, I am not. This has all been kind of presented to me in the last week as well. But I believe if you look at the plans, there are benches around the perimeter here. Um, I also learned that there's barbecue pit, that's what's behind the the picnic shelter here. So yeah, there are some seating areas around the perimeter of the park so the parents can sit and look in. And you you also, I mean, I can't zoom anymore on this, I'm sorry, but you know, there we go. That's as far as I can zoom. Um, as one of the public commenters mentioned, we've got the the fencing around here. So it's actually going to be a little gate that goes into the playground area. And that's of course to keep kids from running out towards the parking lot, which is down here somewhere. But Kyle, I can't answer you as far as how many benches, but Maeve did point out to me where the benches were earlier today. And I, I don't know exactly where they are.
Actually, thanks, yeah, and it seems to me that that's something that could pretty easily be added later.
Yeah, as as is the case with swing sets. I mean, we we ordered the play equipment with, you know, what we had budgeted for play equipment. There there's, if there's empty space in this playground, we can absolutely put more swing sets in in the future. Yeah.
Any other questions from council?
How much artificial turf are you talking about?
Um, you can kind of see it of the whole footprint of the playground here. The turf area is, I'm just going to outline it here for you. Down here, okay, this is not very easy. Um, the center area around the splash pad and all the dark area in the north is not turf. That's um engineered wood uh fill. And then this is going to be a grassy hillside with the asphalt path going around it. So the turf is, I'd say probably around fifty percent of the total area of the playground. And the other surfaces include the splash pad, concrete, the mulch in the north and then grass, grassy hill around the perimeter. And plenty of tree cover as well, there's several existing trees that are being in court. So this is actually a mature tree right in the middle of the playground. So there's shade projected from that tree. And this is an existing tree on the edge of the playground there.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the council? I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution permitting staff to solicit bids for construction of the Travis Park ADA accessible inclusive playground and splash pad.
So moved.
Second.
By Dick, second by Rule, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Community does not want artificial turf. I don't know how else to say it. They're not going to be happy. Um, I don't want to stop, I won't stop with one vote, stop the playground from going forward. So I guess, no.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. The final item on our agenda is an exciting one.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we we have to revisit six A as well.
Oh, thank you.
We might do that now.
Sure, yes, let's cut you loose, yeah. Maybe, let's go back to six A, thank you, Director.
But why don't we do that last, Mr. Mayor? Because I think Molly is here to speak on the committees.
Oh, okay, we'll we'll continue on. HC, head bike committee code updates. Um, as our citizen advisory committees are being reactivated, council will be reviewing considering amendments to sections of city code that govern these committees brought forth by city staff. To get us started on these amendments presented this evening, our proposed ordinance is amending Title II, Chapter Six and Seven for the pedestrian bicycle advisory and sustainability committees. I will now again yield the floor to Jason. And I'm just um so so excited that we are reactivating these committees. They're such an important, important role, important part to play in this democracy we have. So um, thank you so much for all your work to get these going, Jason.
Okay, I'll be pretty quick here. Um, we're in the process of re reinstating these committees and commissions. Of course, we wanted to revisit the the language around their purpose, their duties, the the formation, their terms and so on. So most of this is pretty boilerplate language around that. There were the only things I think might be of interest to you besides the, you know, the 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 organizational information at the top is there have been some amendments to the to the duties. I personally amended some of these just to, I think, make them a little bit more robust. Um, they're actually more significant amendments to the sustainability one, which we'll look at in a moment because the the duties of the previous sustainability committee were almost nothing as far as I could tell. So I added a lot of responsibility for that committee. But I assume you've had a chance to look at these. If you have any questions, let me know. Um, we can take public comment in a moment and I'm open to suggestions as well if there's things you think we should add. But we 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 would like to, you know, get these amendments approved as quickly as possible because we can't reform the committee until we've updated the code around it. And I'd like to thank Heather for drafting, Heather Opton, for drafting all of these amendments and Melissa for doing the the necessary clerical work to make sure they're ready for approval tonight. So are there any questions or comments about the the language around the pedestrian bicycle committee?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Rule?
Um, well, I don't even know where it is because, you know, I'm really good at highlighting, Jason. You never did teach me how to do that. Um, so I'm going to blame it on him. But my comments would be, um, there's one area where you only um name ADA um relative to the other committees. And and I think ADA is. Um, and it, I think ADA could be involved in planning and rec and sustainability in all those ways. Um, so that would be my one comment. Um, the the other comment is that um I didn't feel like um the deliverables were as maybe as explicit as I was hoping for. Um, and I guess because of my historical context, I don't want to end up in the same space we were in before where um, you know, uh, minutes get here late or we just really don't end up getting what our intention is from the committees. So maybe that's more process and will happen as the committees form and move forward. And then um my other um uh comment would be that um I can see the pros and cons of term limits. Um, but I guess what my request would be is um on most of these committees, I understood you could serve two full terms and then you were no longer able to serve on a committee. But I think if we have residents that are passionate, um, I think there can be a pro and con to that. A resident who may be too passionate maybe needs to take a break from the committee so that other people can be heard. Um, but somebody who um is very passionate um and um contributes a lot, um, it seems like we shouldn't bar them. So my suggestion would be that after you've served two full terms, that maybe there's a two-year break and then that person could reapply to get back on that committee. So that would give the committee an opportunity to maybe head in a different direction or whatnot, but still allow that person to come back if they were still committed to um any one of these committees that we have within the city. And I know some committees, um, there's more applicants for than other committees. So that would also um maybe help with some of the committees that aren't quite as popular or that um have a specialty that's necessarily necessary. For example, our tree committees, you know, it'd be great to have arborists and stuff like that on our committees. So that's it.
Yeah, good suggestions, thank you.
Councilman Rule, would um you be uh agreeable to getting these up and running and maybe tweaking them next year?
Absolutely, absolutely. I know, I know that nothing's written in stone and so we can amend. And once the committees start moving forward, I think Jason will have a better feel for that. We'll have a better feel for that. But I definitely don't want to lose sight of making sure we have some absolute deliverables because that is one of the things I spoke about um to the public as we were being elected again. Um, and then, like I said, there's positive, there's pros and cons to term limits, so.
And Councilman Rule, could you just educate me? Um, historically, you weren't getting minutes or the committees weren't meeting or you're frustrated by?
Um, the sustainability committee fell apart due to lack of participation. Um, it would be, um, we'd be making decisions and then minutes from three, four months behind when some of these committees were meeting monthly. Um, it was kind of disastrous in a lot of ways, so. Um, the other final suggestion I had in this, um, actually, I think Wayne and I discussed this at one point, that there are other cities and um that also put a planning commission member onto some of their other committees because it is appropriate with Parks and Rec. Wow, there's planning to do with that. Um, ADA planning has to do with that. Um, you know, ped and bike has to do with that. So I would like that to also be a consideration that we could request of our planning commission if they would sit on some of these committees where it is appropriate. And I think that could um pull things together so we have a better product in the long term.
I would agree and uh maybe once we get through a lot of our work, maybe even have a council member be a liaison to these committees as well.
I thought that was already, that's how it used to, I I thought that was in there already. But maybe it's not for each. Yeah, right there.
That's at least in the intent, I'm not.
No, I saw it, you were there that. Yeah, right there, mayor, city, city council and planning. Oh, no, okay. Um, historically, we've had a council member sit on the committee.
Ex officio members may include a council member and the chairpersons of any similar committees established by Bonner County or.
It's it's the may versus the shall, so or must. But yeah, I I think it depends on how much work the council's dealing with in any given year, but I love it. Council members being.
Yeah, I thought I read it in there.
I'm sorry, it does say a city council liaison appointed by the mayor with the consent of the city council person being.
May, yeah.
Yeah, I I read it in there somewhere, yeah. It's under organization.
Gives us discretion.
Do not use that word.
All right, um, are there any any other council questions? Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment.
Hi, Mayor and Council, thank you. It's turning into a long evening as they often do. Um, I think that staff has generally done a very thoughtful job in rewriting this ordinance. And I think the committees are really important. And I have a lot of thoughts about ways in which, the one that interests me, pedestrian bicycles should be coordinating with council to make sure that the things they're studying are are things you're interested in and vice versa. But that's not stuff you put in an ordinance. And um, thank you for bringing them back. I I think the city will be better off for it. And they can be a pain in the ass, but it's like a child, in the end, you'll be glad.
Thank you, Ma.
I don't believe anyone else wishes to speak on the side of Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'd also just let the council know that in the current budget, I'm uh working staff and we're trying to fund all these committees with at least enough money to, you know, subscribe to a publication, get a book, maybe go to a training event. So I think that's part of having a strong committee. Um, and commission is making sure you give them the tools to actually do the work they need. And those tools come in the form of funding. So uh, as we get to budget, I hope you support those those funding elements. Well, now I asked the clerk uh to read the title of the Ped Bike Committee Ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Sandpoint City Code Title II, Chapter Six, Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee, providing for severability and providing for publication and an effective date.
I'd entertain a motion that the ordinance passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
So moved, second.
Moved by uh Schreiber, second by Dick, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
The ordinance is passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I'd entertain a motion that the rules regarding three separate readings once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended at the ordinance passed its second and third reading under suspension of the rules.
I moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Rule. This will be a roll call.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Motion passes, the ordinance is considered read and passed and adopted under suspension of the rules and become effective following publication and summary of the newspaper.
Mr. Mayor, if I just have a question relative to those term limits. Um, since the committees are and commissions are new from this point forward, with this historical context of somebody who may have served on one of the old committees, apply to term limits.
I would, um, if if I have discretion, I would say not. Um, but I would have to refer to Fonda for that.
That's correct, these are new, so you're adopting these ordinances anew. So these new limits are going to start as of today. So it'll be your newest appointments going forward. Okay, thank you.
Excellent, that's exciting. Um. Next. Uh, don't we have the ADA? Was that both of them? Yeah, sustainability is. AD, sorry, thank you. Sustainability Committee code updates. Uh, we kind of talked through some of the questions, um, unless there's further discussion. I would now ask the clerk to read the title of the Sustainability Committee ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Sandpoint City Code Title II, Chapter Seven. Sustainability Committee, providing for severability and providing for publication and an effective date.
I'd entertain a motion that the ordinance passes its first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Schreiber, second by Ducat. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
The ordinance is passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I'd entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended. That the ordinance pass its second and third readings under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Councilman Dick, second by Ducat. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes, the ordinance is considered read and passed and adopted under suspension of the rules and will become effective following publication and summary of the newspaper. We will now move to, uh, item six H, proposed resolution that was pulled from consent calendar by. Councilman Schreiber, Second Amendment to the Ponderay Peddlers Watershed Trail License Agreement. Councilman Schreiber, take it away with any questions or that you might have on this item.
True. So, you know, I want to start by, um, acknowledging all the great work that Andre Peddlers does in the community. And, you know, I've been a supporter for a long time. Um, I. Am an avid mountain biker and personally benefit from everything they do for our community. I also want to recognize the wisdom of the presume, previous council to put an expiration date on this. So that it can be reviewed periodically. Uh, and I think it's appropriate to do that. I want to thank Jason for sending me some additional information. Um, the. The language around how this watershed budget is going to be used, mentioned a couple of plans. And so I started looking through those plans. And one of the things that really concerns me is in the. Little Sand Creek Recreation Plan. It talks about the different types of trails. And one of the types of tra- trails is, uh, gravity, gravity trails. And to quote it, it says, this type of trail should be wider up to eighty inches in segments that have jumps or technical features. But can be narrower as little as twelve inches in other segments. And, um, I recently went up and, and inspected the work that's going on in the watershed. And the trail, trails that are currently being built are. In excess of eighty inches in every section and up to in excess of eleven feet in some sections. So that's well over fifty percent more than what our, uh, recreation master plan calls for. And so I think that it warrants, um, revisiting the, the framework. That this agreement, um, operates within to add additional oversight. You know, I, I think a lot of people in our community support trail development in the watershed. But, uh, that term trail has a lot of variability in what it could mean to some people versus others. And I think there are plenty of people in the community as well as, you know, members of POP that, uh, would prefer. S- you know, single track trail rather than, you know, I went out and measured the wheels on my full-size Chevy van at six feet. So it could easily drive down any section of this. And there are parts that you could park two of them next to each other. So, um, you know, perhaps in an urban setting, like a BMX tracks or, or something like that, this would be appropriate. But I think that the primary purpose of our watershed is, um, protecting our water quality. And, um, any recreation that we add to that needs to respect that. I also have concerns about the money that's being allocated to, um, trail work. In the watershed, uh, it's the entire budget that we have, uh. Allocated for erosion control. And in our, uh, Little Sand Creek Timber Management Plan, there's a very convenient map about. Where, um, the least and most, uh, problem areas are for erosion. And the problem, or the area that we're choosing to allocate our entire fund, not only all of this year, but half of next year's. Is the least concern, whereas the area that we're actively logging is moderate. To severe concern for erosion. So I think that it might be wise to reconsider, uh, how we're going to use those funds.
Is that it, Councilman Trevor?
Yeah, I'd open it up to conversation at this point.
Um, you know, Councilman Schreiber, I, I, I just mentioned a couple of things in all respect. Uh, you, you said. The trail should be up to eighty inches. Um, using my favorite word of the night, that's. You, oh, I'm sorry, I wrote down should.
Can be up to eighty inches.
So it's more restrictive. Doesn't give us discretion.
Just not.
I guess my other point is, you know, we have, we know, uh, that there's known areas of concern. We know that there's erosive, uh, and poorly maintained areas, uh, in our watershed. Um, we have a, uh, very qualified team here currently. Uh, who is able to address those concerns without the cost of bidding and mobilization and staff time to organize all of that. So in my mind, um, the, the budget amount for this work in our watershed probably needs to be expanded. If we've got, um, known erosion and severe erosion and, um, found erosion, I think we should, uh, address it. And I, I think we should probably put more money in our budget next year to address erosion. I would like to take care of all known erosion, uh, as soon as we know about it.
I can, um, understand that. The point that there's already a crew there working. And that we're going to pay them extra to continue the job that they're doing. Is, uh, problematic for me because the job that they're doing is out of line with the scope of our plan. And so if we're going to move forward with that, I would like to specify that they must work within our, the. The specifications of our plan and not create an eleven, seven to eleven foot wide swath. The rest of the way through our watershed. Um, right now, that section is two to three foot wide. Single track and, um.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond. Yeah, and I just want to qualify. I've, I've gone down our watershed trails twice on a mountain bike. And I am not very acquainted with the detail of the trail system that you have. Um, but I know that council, I mean, Director Welker is very familiar and maybe he can add some color. So I've pulled up, this is the GIS map that was created by, uh, Point Environmental, which is the consultant that developed our watershed recreation. Watershed management plan, which was, of which the watershed rec plan is an appendix. Uh, this work was done in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Um, it was in twenty twenty that POP. Only after the adoption of the watershed management plan began work in this corridor. And this yellow corridor is identified as an inactive road. It's not identified as a trail in our watershed management plan. Because it is a road, it was established probably in the nineteen seventies or so to, uh, put phone lines up to. Schweitzer, I assume they're still old. As you know, there's still old sections of conduit sticking out of the trail, which themselves are a safety hazard. But Russ, uh, I believe his name was Russ, Russell, uh, Randy, sorry, Randy Reeves was the consultant whose team walked. I can zoom out and you can see other areas of the watershed that they did an assessment on. Uh, but this was one of the inactive roads that they assessed and identified multiple. Multiple erosion hazards, um, inadequate for larger storms. This was a culvert that was not adequately maintained or installed. Um, so I, I did want to point out that this actually is a road. It's not a trail. It's identified as a road in our watershed GIS map. And the specifications you described were for trails. And I, I know you understand that we're basically converting a disused road into a trail. But the corridor is not being widened beyond what was already there. So you could just see a comment from the assessment. Inadequate bridge does not span entire crossing width. Bridge's uphill side is low, reconfigure stream. High risk of washing out during high water events, sediment observed in stream. Every single one of these little red dots is a, an issue. Bike, bridge has been bypassed by cyclists. By the way, these were bridges that POP had nothing to do with construction of. These were user-created bridges going back to the mid nineteen nineties. Uh, bridge has been bypassed by cyclists, causing a Ford on the upstream side widening and diverting flow. Bike passes through water channel. That these, every one of these little red dots was an issue affecting water quality. Culverts blown out, bridges that were literally underwater. And I don't, it, that, I, so the, the work being done in there. I'm not going to pretend that it's not also for recreation. It is. This is a combined objective of the watershed capital improvement fund. This fund will be used on forest management, erosion and restoration projects located within the city of Sandpoint Parcels within Little Saint Creek Watershed. The projects were identified as priorities in the twenty twenty-two Urban Forestry Master Plan, the twenty twenty-one Little Saint Creek Watershed Management Plan. That's what I just showed you. And the twenty twenty-three Little Saint Creek Recreation Plan. These projects will vary in scope and are scheduled to begin in fall of twenty-three and begin through twen- and. And, uh, continue through twenty-four. So th- this is the, what's in our budget. This is what's described. The initial budgeted amount was fifty thousand. The proposal tonight is to increase that to seventy-five thousand. The reason being, the contractor's scope increased. And when Maeve, our parks planner, walked the corridor, the mile corridor that work is being done on. It was obvious that the fifty thousand dollars wasn't going to completely rebuild that mile of corridor, which I'll put back up here for you. This is the yellow line you see there is approximately one mile in length. And the corridor itself is far more than eighty inches in width because as it's shown on the map, it is a road, an inactive road. And it is being rebuilt as a trail and several thousand dollars worth of new culverts are being installed. Uh, Ponderay Peddler volunteers are building two new bridges through here that are eight feet wide because that's the width necessary. That's more than eighty inches, I would point out. The bridges themselves are wide to accommodate the wider nature of this road turned to trail. So decommissioning of, of disused roads is standard across trail development all over the place. Oftentimes trails just emerge in roads. So what you call a single track was what bike tires had. Turned into basically an erosion channel slash single track over the last twenty-five years. So, but yeah, th- this is a, this is a dual-purpose project. It's not simply an erosion mitigation project. It's also fulfilling objectives from the watershed recreation plan, which in this case, uh, focused on a bike optimized mountain bike trail. I can also assure you, uh, Councilman Schreiber, that there will be no other trails like that in the watershed. Because that's a road corridor. It's definitely being built far wider because they're using the corridor that was existing. And, and in some places, they're moving out of that corridor where it was deemed unsustainable to stay in that corridor. But the nature of that trail is definitely unique among any other trails envisioned in the watershed rec plan. These are primarily going to be shared use. Most of the trails we're going to build are going to be for hikers and bikers, kind of like the Cross Country Trail that POP built two, three years ago. Um, and yeah, of course, there's trails going envisioned all across the watershed. These are not. Um, I don't know why I'm talking about trails while showing you the watershed management, uh, results. These are from the twenty nineteen assessment. But yeah, um, I ju- I just wanted to point out that this inactive road is where the work is being done right now. And the, the work that's being done is going to result in. Absolutely unquestionably benefits for our water quality because this trail slash road runs like a river in spring runoff. And sedimentation, you can click on any of these bubbles and see pictures of, of the effects of, uh, twenty-five years of. Neglect and poor maintenance, not just poor maintenance, but never having actually invested in this corridor. The way that, uh, a, a corridor that's being used for recreation should have been invested in. So we were, we were losing both from a, a recreation standpoint, from a water quality standpoint. And quite frankly, a, a liability standpoint, because although we are recreational use state, which means that generally speaking. Um, the city is protected from claims of, you know, neglect or liability claims when somebody gets injured on a city. Uh, a piece of city property. There are exceptions to that and that is when there is, uh, gross negligence. In terms of the, uh, maintenance of structures on a trail. Um, Councilman Schreiber, I know you broke. Your shoulder or your collarbone last year on this very section of trail. I know several people, I have a friend who broke a neck on one of the sections of trail through here, uh, because it was on an old utility corridor. So the goal here is to take what was an old utility corridor slash user-created trail and turn it into a modern bike optimized flow trail. Yes, with thousands of dollars worth of culverts. I know because Ponderay Peddlers has been purchasing those and, um. And providing them to the contractors to install, but it's, it's going, it's getting done right now. And it was never done at all in the past, other than by users putting in these dangerous and unsustainable structures. So. Any other council comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would just have a question about the water utility funds. Is that where this money is coming from?
Yeah.
Five thousand. And just because it's, it says that the water fund is responsible for the production, treatment and distribution of drinking water.
Yeah, it's coming from the timber sales, which, uh, has a broader, um, scope and connotation. Which is to include erosion, watershed health, things to that effect. In fact, this is the original. This is the resolution from nineteen ninety-four that articulates what the funds generated from city timber sales shall be used for. So road, bridge or drainage system maintenance, surveying or engineering, timber management, land acquisition within the watershed and crucial water project funding. So the, the current project falls under road, bridge, drainage system maintenance. And of course, when we adopted the watershed rec plan, recreation was added to that as well. Until twenty twenty-three, there was no formal rec plan. I've seen documents going back to the mid two thousand teens. When city council was referencing the future adoption of a watershed recreation. That was a project ten years in the making. Deb's been here for all ten years of it. So, so of course, this, this resolution is thirty years old. Excuse me. Um, now that we have a watershed rec plan, maybe this resolution needs to be updated to include recreation infrastructure as well. But in, in essence, the, the current project is a road and bridge and drainage system maintenance project.
To be a bike trail.
Yep. You like clean water?
I am all for clean water.
Along, along that, oh, sorry.
Go ahead Tucker.
Along that point, could you point out on that map where the, uh, intake structure is for our water treatment plant? Is it above or below the project?
It's kind of right below it. Yeah, so the intake is, um, right here. We're not seeing your. Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I don't know what Zoom is doing. Let me, um, unshare and share again.
I also just want to comment that I don't think that our community desires an eight-foot wide road through there. Even though that's maybe what was there fifty or more years ago and, um. Allowing it to be reclaimed as the, uh, ecosystem that existed before. It was a road that is no longer necessary is preferable to. Converting it back to an unnecessary road.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President.
So if I might comment, when we were doing the wat- watershed recreation master plan, um. There was a lot of public input and there were some decisions made to, um, for all uses of the watershed. To keep some areas calm, um, more peaceful. And it was decided that, um, it made the most sense to build the bike trails where we had some of these old roads. Or where we already had bike trails. And if you will notice that the bike trails are all to the right-hand side of the road as you're driving up. Whereas to the left-hand side of the road, it's more natural, um, it protects the wildlife. Um, the creek that comes into our water treatment is also on that side. So it was sort of determined at that point with a lot of public input. And I think what you're seeing when they work in. And I think what you're seeing when they work in the um. Watershed and they're building trails that um, sometimes there's a, a visual site corridor that's really important. So as um, vegetation grows back in, it may not be as wide as it appears now. Because they've had to take out trees and different things for safety issues. So those are some of the things that I've learned over the years where there's a, there's like a tree corridor, but your actual trail tread. Once your ground cover comes back in is going to be narrower than what may appear when things are being built.
Um, Director Welker, are there barriers with the um? The, the, the numerous ATVs, ORVs and whatnot. Are there barriers that prevent um? Travel on this wider old trail in that position.
In fact, this, this road in the watershed rec plan was always envisioned as one that could be accessible by side by sides. Mostly because Bonner County EMS has a side by side. So the bridges that pondry peddlers built at the top of the segment right here. Starting in twenty twenty, after the watershed management plan was adopted and the city finally gave the, the organization the green light to go do some improvements in here. They were all built specifically to be able to hold, like the width was determined by the, the wheel width of a, of Bonner County's. Uh, ambulance ATV.
Yeah.
So, and, and still that ATV will be able, sorry, will be able to drive the entire width of this corridor. And that was important because there are trails above this as well. And this will be an EMS access point, which is. The watershed rec plan identifies the need to have EMS access points throughout the watershed. But no, there's no recreational use of motorized vehicles in here beyond class one e-bikes, I think people use.
So I'm hearing um. Any other, any other questions?
I do have a question for legal. Can you comment on the issue of having? A member of the board of the organization that uh, we're. Uh, contracting with also be the member of staff who is overseeing that contract. Um, my understanding is that. Mister Welker could potentially be the signatory for both parties on this contract.
So if Mister Welker's put in a position where he would need to be the signatory on both. As both parties on the contract, of course, we would advise him against that. He doesn't have a conflict of interest simply by being the staff member that's overseeing the project. He would need to disclose if he's receiving any financial. Any financial benefit from the project in any way. And I haven't heard any disclosure of that as we've been sitting here. This is also a different analysis with um. Director Welker as a staff member than it would have been if he was a council member. So we want to be careful when we analyze those conflicts of interest related that way.
Yeah, and I'd also. I'd also just point out that, I mean, for example, you're on the board of Bonner County Housing, city's working on housing projects. It's a small town, but. I'm not aware of any, and I'd ask um, Director Walker, you don't have any financial gain from this too.
Far from it.
Now, I guess my point is more that uh. Pop is operating outside of the boundaries that the city has set and the person. Ensuring that those boundaries are being met was recently the executive director and still on the board if I, if I'm correct on that.
I'm a, I'm a board member, yes.
I, how are they operating outside of the boundaries? That's what I'm not clear.
Oh, by creating trails that are more than fifty percent wider than the uh.
Oh, I, I thought we heard that this was an existing corridor.
No, I'm talking about a new road that's being built at this moment, not the project, but higher up in the watershed.
A, a, a road being built higher up in the watershed?
Yeah, the black trail, the, the new black trail that you're building.
Oh, that's nowhere near eighty inches wide.
I have pictures that I took with a tape measure a couple of days ago, if you'd like to see them. Um, I mean.
I think we're referring to the, the guidelines, which are basically copied and pasted from INBA into our watershed rec plan, because INBA did some of the work on that. Yeah, those are guidelines.
So you, you feel that you, they don't apply to you?
Guidelines. I'm, I'm not sure what you mean.
Do, in terms of the, the eighty inches that you just referenced.
You, you're, you're taking issue with the, the design and nature of the trails that are being built right now?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And the idea that the city is going to pay for more of those trails.
The, the city beyond the corridor in yellow here is not contributing anything to these projects. This is entirely funded by grants and donations generated by pondry peddlers. Everything else that's going on.
No, I understand that, but you're asking for seventy five thousand dollars to continue the work. By the contractor that's already there and the contractor that's already there is working outside of the boundaries that we've set forth in our plan. So you just told us that you plan on making this wider than eighty inches as well.
What I heard was that the corridor was wider than eighty existing. It's an old road.
Yeah, in, in fact, I mean, INBA plans describe the corridor being cleared to with, to up to ten feet on either side of the ride line. So yeah, the corridor is definitely ri- wider, but there's about a thirty percent as councilwoman Rule indicated. That, that what you see during construction, that's like, you know. Going down to Granite Hill while they were building the, the ninety five expansion saying, wow, look at all the corridor they've cleared for this highway expansion. Well, when the highway is done, it's not five hundred yards wide. It's a hundred yards wide or whatever it is. I mean, the same thing is, is the case here. There's going to ultimately be a lot of revegetation of the perimeters of that corridor. The ride line ends up being eighty inches. Actually, the ride line ends up being more like twenty four inches. You know this. People aren't riding their bikes down the edge. Of a corridor, you're crashing into trees if you're doing that or you're riding off the edge of.
So it comes down to what's the definition of the trail versus the corridor.
Trail versus the corridor. And the corridor is always going to be far wider than the trail.
I'd, I'd love to point out a couple of things. Um, one, dollar for dollar, if you read the headwater economics um, study on trails uh. Uh, utilization of watersheds, um, the economic benefit of trails to a community that multipliers of trail users in terms of. Visiting our, our, our stores, our restaurants, um, the health of uh, having trails for a community. The cost for us, I, I'd be willing to put a lot more money in our trails when. You compare it to the cost of upkeeping other types of park facilities. I think this is some of the best bang for the dollar and um. I would, I would be encourage all council members to, to look for ways. To put more effort towards trails as long as it doesn't jeopardize the water quality with watershed. I think, I think this is a fabulous resource that we're just starting to tap.
And just to expand on that, I mean, this, the development of the watershed rec plan, as is the case with all master plans of the city, was a public. Engagement effort. There were three, I think, out um, here at city hall. We did one at Matchwood Brewing. Um, the, over two hundred people attended the one at Matchwood Brewing that the mayor was at. In fact, the mayor kicked it off, Mayor um, Rongstad. Uh, of, of course Maeve was there. We had three professional consultants in town for that. Two, over two hundred people. Came out and said loud and clear that this is what the community wants. So when I hear you say the community would rather see this restored to its natural state. That's absolutely not what the community that participated in the watershed recreation plan said. When they were given pictures of different types of trails they'd like to see in the watershed and they were given the red, yellow and, and green dots. And, and the type of trail that the community that participated in that process, which is the community that we built the plan around. Because who else do you build plans around other than those who participate in the process? That the green dots overwhelmingly said they wanted bike optimized flow trails like this. So, so um. I, I do take issue with your claim that the community would rather see this restored to its natural state. Perhaps there are people in the community who would like to see that. I'm not disputing that. There definitely are. But that's not who participated in the watershed rec planning process.
Mister Mayor, so that meeting that you're referring to, a match with over two hundred people, was that also advertised as a pondry peddlers? Uh, group meeting?
Um, not that particular one. No, I'm talking about one in October, I think of twenty twenty two.
I was at the meeting and it was a pop meeting. And my question to you, if. Let's say we did all of our public engagement at a Sandpoint Winter Riders Snowmobile Club meeting. Do you think the outcome of that engagement would have looked a little different?
I think the primary uh, audience of that would probably be the. Uh, Winter Snowmobile Riders Club and they would have been advocating for snowmobile trails. Yeah, that's how advocacy in the community works.
Yeah, so the idea that everyone at a pop meeting voted for mountain biking, I don't think. Gives us the license to um. Exceed the, the bounds of our plan.
Councilman Schreiber, can I try to pull this back to an actionable item and really try to discern? What um, what your sticky wicked is here. Um, we've got erosion in the watershed. We've got funding to repair it. We probably need more. Um, we've got a mobilized entity that can take care of this work here today, saving us. Dollars, uh, staff time. Um, it sounds like you have concerns about. The watershed and I think that's a. But, you know, subject to roach, but, and, and the recreational plan and trails, but um. For the item that we're discussing tonight is. Is there a objection to spending our, our utility or our watershed dollars or timber sale dollars to repair erosion?
No, I, I think it's absolutely appropriate to be using that money to repair erosion. We should focus that money on the places where erosion is the biggest concern. And if you look at our timber management plan, this is the area of least concern. And the area that we're actively logging right now is in moderate to severe concern. So before we spend our entire budget on a area that is of least concern, I think we need to. Uh, address whether this is the best place for that erosion control money. Now, if we are doing it as a recreational project, maybe we can use parks um, capital improvement money for it or something. But uh. We're talking about money set aside for protecting our watershed, not building more roads in our watershed.
Okay, I, I don't believe we're building new roads and I, I would suggest that we, we put, I'll put more money in the budget next year for. For erosion and erosion control in the watershed. The active logging project is active. I don't believe you can do erosion control while you're actively logging.
Right. And if we have any money left, if we don't have any money left over, when that logging project is, is done and we get a. Big heavy rain event and there is an erosion problem, we will have nothing left in our budget to use.
We may have to open the budget. The, the, the fund in particular is um, robust in terms of. Dollars available for erosion control.
Uh, I would also point out that the logging project that's ongoing right now, the contractor is being required to replace seven culverts through that project. So we are addressing erosion as we're addressing the logging going on over there. That's part of the contract with the, and Cheryl's, if she's still here, could probably confirm that. Uh, Mo Dunkle's log, logging operation was. Required to rebuild roads and reinstall culverts that had been determined in this same plan. So the user group that's in there logging is also doing watershed uh, erosion mitigation at the same time.
Yeah, I don't have any doubt that they are.
Mister Mayor, I might also point out that um, currently because of the roads that the, um, we were told the logging project is. On a whole, in a holding pattern right now, but.
Weight limits in mind, yep.
Exactly. Um, and the road is just not passable, but.
Um, just one more point, the, the, the idea that the public outreach was only. Uh, targeting the mountain bike community. I would also remind you that the city was the recipient of an RTCA. Uh, National Park Service Recreational Trails, uh, Rivers Trails Conservation Grant. That whole outreach effort was led by um, a woman named uh, Betsy, who came about five times to Sandpoint. She lives in Salt Lake City. Over a year and a half and steered the watershed rec. Process. And there was outreach, trust me, we, we, the, the city had meetings with the tribe. The city had meetings with. The Nordic Club, the city had meetings with conservation groups, including Kynixland, Kynixland Trust helped paid for the watershed recreation plan. That, to suggest that this was not a, a broad outreach effort, um, and, and the, the particular. Um, one outreach effort that I referred to earlier, uh. That was also advertised on the city's website. So everybody, and there were plenty of non-mountain bikers there, I recall as well. And yeah, it was primarily mountain bikers because that has historically been the user group that has the greatest interest in the watershed. So. But the, the, the effort of the development of the Washington rec plan was a city-run effort. Uh, supported by the RTCA grant that we received for technical assistance.
That I started pushing for back in twenty ten, apparently. So that we would actually have one. I've sat here many days where we didn't have one and people use the watershed without a plan. And make road trails and destroy it. And so now we have a plan in place to keep people on trails. Um, we might not always agree with the types of trails, but if you provide something for every one of the kids in the family. Um, you, you, not everybody's going to like the same thing, so.
Yeah, and I think we need to just zoom out and look broadly at the benefits of a clean. Um, impactful, economically impactful. Uh, industry and attraction for our community. I, I don't, I, I, I don't know why we're, I, I'm sure there's some fine details to iron out, but I. I, I don't, I don't think there's anything bad about, you know. Implementing our, our watershed recreation master plan. Um, and if, if concerns are about funding are, are the concerns, then um. There, we can apply more dollars next year to address other areas of erosion that we know exist, which there are many.
The funding would be my. Interest for what ends up being bike trails.
I think, Councilman Schreiber, your, your point is, and it's well taken, that we could spend seventy five thousand dollars a, addressing erosion elsewhere in the watershed. Perhaps areas where it's, where it's, you know, uh, 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 of, of, of very high concern. Because we can see, well, critical areas in here are referring to wetlands, but um, the, the purpose, the, the idea here was. The, the bike club had a contract with a professional trail builder. To do work funded by the bike club and granted the bike club road. That contractor was in there and the city representative went and walked and said, are you doing this too? And they said, well, no, that the bike club did not include that in the scope of work. Well, this should be done too. Okay, and that was a complete rebuild of about a mile of existing inactive road corridor, as you can see here. And that is what caused the, the, the budget to get higher. It was. Brought to the mayor, the mayor agreed, they're in there, the costs are far lower, lower. By the way, the mobilization costs for a professional trail builder is around fifteen thousand dollars. So just getting one to come here is fifteen thousand dollars right off the bat. So there are cost savings by doing this work now. If we had done, you know, half of it this year, it would have cost at least fifteen thousand dollars more to bring another builder back to fix it in the future. But to suggest that this work didn't need to be done, this is what sends you to the hospital. I mean, the liability to the city of having. User-created features in an old road corridor that has not been maintained formally forever. It's a huge liability for the city and the trails that are being built are infinitely safer and designed in a more sustainable. Way for both the environment and a safer way for users. So.
Mister Mayor.
And your, your issue seems to be with the width of the corridor, but I think you're confusing corridor with ride or trail width.
I don't think I am. Uh, I measured the width of jumps as well. You know, it's not like. Um, the trail, the exit, the ultimate trail is going to be three feet wide when a jump is over six feet wide. I mean, we're talking about gapped jumps with six foot gap between the takeoff and the landing. Uh, so I'm not. I don't see how that. Uh, a single track trail is more liability than a bike park that we're building in our, our. Watershed.
Yeah, to be clear, I, I, I think you're off track here. I think what I want to talk about is solving erosion problems and water quality in our watershed.
I guess what I will.
Least costs with a mobilized crew that's here.
I guess the, the two things that I wanted to bring up is one that we. Don't appear to have a robust system for overseeing this contract. And now is the time to revisit that. Because it's at the contract expiration, we're making the decision whether we should renew that. And I think that we should revisit it. And make sure that uh, the trails being built in the watershed are sustainable. And we should uh, be sure that this is the best use of our erosion. Earbarked funds before we spend it on this project.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Uh, the window's open a few minutes. Fire away.
Yep, uh, I would move to approve the agreement, the watershed trails agreement with the Pottery Peddlers A two three dash five one zero zero dash one. Amendment number two, uh, on the city of Sandpoint's Little Sand Creek.
Second.
Motion by Dick, second by Rule. We have a roll call vote.
Mister Mayor, did you want to check for public comment on this item?
Yeah, thank you.
It does not appear that there will be any.
Thanks for keeping me on my toes, Madam Clerk. Um, so we have a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
I think I have to agree with.
I think I have to agree with um Kyle and no.
Counselor Schreiber?
No.
Mister Mayor, motion passes.
Right, um, with that, uh, with no further business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned at nine oh nine PM.